Will everyone please stand for the pledge?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to everyone. We have our translator here. Alma Flores, please.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Alma y si necesitan traducción estoy sentada ahí atrás.
Thank you. And as indicated on the slide, we have hearing assistance technology for anyone who is hearing impaired. Announcement of closed session action, there were a number of items in closed session and there's no action to report. Acceptance of donations, lots and lots of them for the Madrigals trip.
Move to approve with appreciation, second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. It's a very, very long list, very generous list. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, I do have two presentations. Let me make an announcement first before we go. No, 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 don't go away. Don't go away. You're important to this one. I will be introducing our new Washington school principal, Damian Barnett, at our next meeting. He couldn't make it to tonight's meeting. He's presenting to his own school board in San Luis Obispo, San Luis Coastal. And I am pleased to announce the selection of a new assistant superintendent. As we know, Jan Zettel is retiring at the end of June. We went through interviews. We interviewed many fine applicants for the position. None of them was finer than our own Paul Turnbull, who is currently the principal at Santa Barbara High School. So I am pleased to announce the selection of Paul Turnbull as our new assistant superintendent for secondary education. He will take the position beginning July 1st of this year. Paul has demonstrated, has already demonstrated, the leadership and the brilliance that we need to spread across the secondary district. Other colleagues already see him as a mentor, already see him as the go-to person to get advice from. And Paul, we are happy to be putting you in this position. Paul may want to say something.
My first directive. Thank you very much, first of all, for your confidence. A few years ago, my first position was at Gleta Valley and then Santa Barbara High and now at the district office. And I'm looking very, very forward to meeting as many people as I can at the district and working closely with them, Robin especially, and working very closely with Brian. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Paul. And we will, of course, be advertising the position of principal, Santa Barbara High School, immediately. And that will have about a six-week run. And we hope to conduct the interviews before the end of the school year. Well, we also have with us four outstanding students. Students, would you please come forward? Kelvin Noronha, Sophie DiArcy, Quinn Hensley, and Brenna Hensley. The annual county spelling bee, here, stand right here on this side, would you please? The annual county spelling bee took place on February 28, 2007. Kelvin, who's Kelvin? Here's Kelvin right here. Kevin Noronha, a seventh grader at La Colina Junior High School, took first place in the junior high division of the competition. His winning word in the county championship this year was?
Bagatelle.
Bagatelle. Can you spell it?
What is it?
Sure. Very good. Thank you. Well, winning the county spelling bee is not new to Kelvin. Last year, as a sixth grade competitor, he placed first in the elementary division of the county competition and went on to finish second in the state. So you're going to state soon. Excellent. Best of luck to you. Sophie DiArcy, Sophie, a seventh grader at Gleta Valley Junior High, won the third-place trophy at the county competition. Thank you, we're proud of you for that. And at the elementary division, Quinn Hensley, a fourth grader at Washington School in the Santa Barbara Elementary District, took home first place by spelling?
Vouchsafe.
Can you spell that, folks? Ask Quinn later, he certainly can. And third place went to Brenna Hensley, a sixth grader at Washington School. Congratulations, students. Why don't you go ahead and hand out the plaques? The two top winners in each division will continue on to the state level. The state junior high spelling bee will take place May 12 at the Miller Creek School in San Rafael. The 2007 elementary state spelling bee will be held May 19 at Sonoma State University in Roanoke Park. And Quinn and Brenna, you couldn't be brother and sister, could you? Yes. Yes, they are. It's not just a coincidence that they have the same last name. Congratulations, students. We join your parents, parents and family. Would you please stand up as well? We also have the educators at those schools. We join all of you in celebrating our student success. Best wishes to you as you head to the state competition. We're proud, very proud of you. Thank you.
I just want to tell the students that board members are in awe of their impressive abilities and that at 5:00 on Saturday on Channel 18, they can watch the broadcast of this meeting, maybe put it on DVR, and see yourself. Okay? Thank you for coming.
I have one comment. Mr. Ortiz, what would you do with a bagatelle?
Like Dr. Sarvis said, we can talk about that later.
Superintendent's report.
Well, it is that time of year that is our STAR testing season. STAR is the state testing and reporting system. The schedule is as follows. We have our elementary district STAR testing taking place from April 30 through May 24. The secondary takes place April 24, that was today, through May 22. The high school exit exam testing will again be on May 8 and 9 for grade 10 makeup and, I'm sorry, for grade 10 makeups and grades 11 and 12 retakes. And advanced placement tests are coming up. They'll be administered on various dates in May. They're the first two weeks in May. Richard Ramos, author and resource on gang prevention and intervention, is winding up two days of presentations. He's scheduled for two more days in early May. Yesterday, he was enthusiastically received by a total of 350 upper-grade students from Franklin, Caesar Chavez, and Cleveland Elementary Schools. In the afternoon, he met with about 45 elementary district staff. I looked at the evaluations, they were very, very positive from our staff members. And I looked at the evaluations last night when he met with some 65 Spanish-speaking parents, they were very positive as well. Today, Richard took his message to more than 1,100 students from Santa Barbara and La Cumber, excuse me, junior highs. This evening, he's meeting with English-speaking parents. I was at the presentation last night. I was at the Santa Barbara Junior High presentation. Ms. Malikoff was there as well and we're very pleased with the presentation. But we will be bringing you more information on the presentation, on the evaluation results, on what follow-up people think we need to have on the district's part. Drawing from personal experience, much of it from his teen years as a gang member, Richard's message to students is that they are born to do good and there are three Ds to realizing their potential, to discover their greatness, what does the student want to be, to develop their talent, and to deposit that greatness by giving back to the community. In his meeting with staff and parents, he focused on why students are drawn to gangs and strategies for helping them find their way out. At their respective presentation, staff and parents turned in a short survey, as I said, and we will tabulate and transcribe them. But a quick check of those turned in yesterday indicates that his presentations are being very favorably received and staff and parents want to continue the discussions on the topic. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on district and school matters. A copy is on display in the reception area or can be provided through the superintendent's office. I'd like to call your attention to a couple of items in the last Board Brief. First of all, San Marcos High School had a successful review by the Accrediting Commission of the Western Association of Schools and Colleges, otherwise known as WASC, affirming the remainder of their six-year accreditation. We also saw a letter from the California Department of Education confirming resolution of the remaining compliance items from our Categorical Program Monitoring Review, CPM Review. In June, documentation will be provided to the CDE for the last remaining item. If the Board or any member of the audience knows of anyone interested in working as a crossing guard, we are lacking crossing guards at a couple of our elementary schools and this is primarily because people are not applying for the position. The city police department is in short supply of applications for positions currently open at two of our schools, Harding and Peabody. Anyone interested in applying is encouraged to go to the city's Human Resources Department at 721 Anacapa Street. That's very close to here. Upcoming events. Looking ahead, there are several events we can look forward to in the next few weeks. A GATE parent meeting is being held this evening at Washington Elementary School. The meeting will be focused on meeting standards through an advanced curriculum. Employee Appreciation Day in the Santa Barbara school districts will take place on May 3. This is our seventh annual event at Borders Bookstore downtown. Nutrition Services will conduct the third annual taste-testing food fair on May 4. San Marcos High School will perform the musical, "The Wiz," on May 3 through 5 and May 9, 10, and 11. And you may hear a little more about that very quickly. La Colina Junior High's band and the Primetime Band will perform on May 6. And that's it for tonight's superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. I always like this time of year, lots of good performing arts activities at all of our schools. We are on to our consent agenda and I want to point out to board members that item D4...
Madam President, may I please have a point of information?
Certainly.
I would like, I'm just sitting here in...
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped public comment. I did that last week.
Sitting here in shock of Dr. Sarvis's announcement and, of course, I was ill at the last meeting and I did look at the tape and I wondered if perhaps I missed it because it was in closed session, any discussion of the appointment of an assistant superintendent?
Dr. Noel, the interviews did not take place until yesterday.
Well, I find it astounding to learn of an appointment of an assistant superintendent, however qualified, at a board meeting in a public statement with no prior, not forget consultation, information. I've been on this board for eight and a half years and assistant superintendent-level decisions are always brought to the board as personnel items in closed session. Principalships are as well. It's usually the understanding that this is the superintendent's decision. I'm not sure about assistant superintendents, but in any event, but that board consensus and board discussion and board participation or support of the decision is sought. I just find it astounding that the members of this board, in any official sense, first learned of it 10 minutes ago.
Actually, Dr. Noel, there was a series of emails that went from the superintendent to the board between yesterday and today regarding this very same item.
I've checked my email as recently as this morning and I didn't get an email of that effect.
And actually, I have to say, Mrs. Harder, that the emails that Dr. Sarvis was sending in a series were just to those of us who were on the interview committee. The board, I don't think, got any notice until this afternoon.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct. Well, what you'll find...
To continue my comment, if I may, Dr. Sarvis.
Sure.
Since I have been recognized by the chair.
Dr. Noel.
I think that this is a serious issue of something I've been concerned about for some time and that is openness of our processes, a serious issue about public trust, and a terrible burden to put onto Mr. Turnbull, who have to step into office under these circumstances without any kind of process involving the representatives of the public before that decision's made. Now I'm finished. Thank you, Mrs. President.
Not a problem, Dr. Noel, and I will allow Dr. Sarvis to make comment. But suffice to say that it's almost, and certainly this would not be a response to you, but it's ironic that you mentioned the word openness because I think that part of the reason why it was announced today was precisely because of openness, and I use that term with quotes around it. It was known by a number of people that Mr. Turnbull was interviewing yesterday. I think that it soon became no secret what was taking place and I think that that was what propelled the decision to make it public this evening. But I'll let Dr. Sarvis speak to it.
Well, what is no secret, Mrs. Harder? Is that how we run the openness of a public organization?
Well, as...
I'm absolutely baffled that this could be considered a gesture towards openness. Forgive me.
Well, as you'll see in the email to you, I said clearly in the email that it was fully my intention to bring this to the board in closed session so that you could have that discussion. And I did not expect this process to be wrapped up so quickly. However, the urgency here is to go out for a new position, a new principal position for Santa Barbara High School. And it is because of that urgency that, having made the decision, I sent the email to the board as a heads-up and announced it tonight so that we can open this position tomorrow. Even waiting a week could be detrimental to us. Now, there are two positions that I announced. One was an elementary position. Had that position been decided upon and finalized before the agenda went out, I would have had that on closed session. And of course, this is the high school position. We just went through the interviews on Monday. I did all the background checks. Today, I made the final decision and brought it to you as quickly as I could so that we could proceed with the opening for the principal position. I'm sorry that you did not get that email in advance. Had I guessed that you wouldn't see the email, I would have called you. I believe the others were informed and I believed, coming into this meeting, that you were also informed. And I apologize for that.
Go ahead, Mrs. Parker.
I beg your pardon, Madam Chair. Just jumping in on this, I would like it to be known that I think most board members would always be willing to come into a special meeting in a case like this where you needed to move quickly to reopen. It would have been good to have had the discussion ahead of time and I am sorry that Dr. Noel was blindsided by it.
Okay, moving on.
I'm still... Part of my frustration is that anticipating an agenda item down the way tonight is that we had a, I believe every board person got it because at least I got it forwarded from you, Mrs. Harder, an email from a parent and constituent suggesting that in the budgetary crisis that we face, that we might want to postpone filling the position of assistant superintendent for secondary for a year. A substantial amount of money's involved in that position. I think it's pushing $130,000 plus benefits. And I guess I would still like to bring this up at the appropriate time on the agenda, Madam President.
I was about to say, I will leave that to you to bring up under item E1. Moving on to item C8, which I apologize, I almost skipped. Miss Cordero.
I'm sorry, I just want to take the opportunity to congratulate Mr. Turnbull on your new position and I welcome you to the district.
He's in the district.
The district offices.
Go ahead, Ms. Malikoff.
Laura Baker, followed by David Holmes.
My name's Laura Baker, I'm a teacher at La Cumbera Junior High. Again, I'm here to talk about the academy move to La Cumbera, obviously. I'd like to know if there really has been a decision made already because what's happening at the school sure feels like it. We have visitors visiting right and left measuring our classrooms. We had a teacher sitting at her computer during spring break and people walked into her room, actually startled her, to measure her classroom for an academy room, which is on one of the plans as an academy room. We have another teacher, it was after school, working in her room and people walked in to measure and said, gee, can we put a wall here or not? I know that a certain amount of planning has to happen by the planning team, however, this really feels like we are the dying animal with the vulture circling overhead waiting for our gasping last breath, or worse yet, that they've already been there picking at our body before we're even done. And I just, I'd like this to cease and desist, especially over the next two weeks while we are in our testing time. Please don't allow anyone to visit our school during our testing time. It's really, it is getting a little upsetting, honestly. The decision, official decision, has not been made. So we don't even know what plans are going with. A1, A, B1, C, who knows what? I mean, this is frustrating for us. We were told at one of the meetings, one of the planning meetings, that when it came down to it, we would be able to be there and have a voice in this process of, you know, how the school would be divvied up between the two schools. Is that happening already and we don't know it? I mean, this is frustrating. We had the health clerk from the academy called our health clerk the other day and said, so how big is your office? I want to know whether my desk will fit in there or not. What are they being told that we are not being told? Okay, this is what I've been complaining about all along, about the process, to speak about the process. This doesn't feel right. It never has. It has felt like a done deal from the get-go. You have timeline issues. The portables out in the back are slated to come out July in June and not to be completed until August 3rd. That's if all goes on time, as you know, construction usually doesn't. You don't have time to move these kids in by July. Pat Salee made an interim option for you that said status quo for one more year. I think as time has marched on here, that is going to be the most prudent decision for you to look at. And I know that many of you here, in your minds individually, have made your mind up already. I'd like for you to step back and look at it and say, you know, they're right, status quo is probably the way for us to go. Thank you.
Dave Holmes.
Usually I'd have students come in and give you a little talk about "The Wiz." Thank you, Dr. Sarvis, for mentioning the show. They're still rehearsing. We're doing dance rehearsals tonight. So I'm here because I'd like to plug the show, but I'm also here because of the decisions that, you know, you guys are faced with making and I just wanted to tell you a little story. Given what's happened in our community, it's really clear that what kids need is a way to belong to something bigger than themselves. Probably the best example of that is a student belonging to a band or a cast or a dance troupe. They belong to something that is bigger than their little circle and they feel valued and accepted and important. And I wanted to tell you, share with you a story because the cuts that have to be made in order to get the budget to balance will probably affect programs. My human cry has always been, you need to watch out for the programs, it's not the bottom line. If decisions were made about programs, we'd cut everywhere else but these kind of large-group activities, elementary music, theater, all the electives, those places where kids have a chance to belong to something larger than themselves. Mr. Levy is an English teacher at San Marcos and in the spring, we team teach together, a playwriting class. Can you believe it? We were able to offer a playwriting class and we get together with my acting class and we mount these plays. And they're student voices. And I wanted to tell you this story and I hope I don't run out of time. There was a young man in the class who hadn't spoken to his parents in two years, who did not participate in any classroom activity. He sat quietly and just was brooding. He wrote a play that is very hard to read. We probably can't produce it. But it gave him a voice. Concerns mass murder and the rationale behind a sick mind. Scary stuff, really scary stuff. And it gave him a voice. And then the Virginia Tech thing happened. And he came into class and he went, wow, this is really scary. This is like what I wrote. I'm not that way. And it opened up a dialogue. That's the value of what we do. This kid has gone from this very limited world to something much, much bigger. And he's, we're kind of excited about it. We don't exactly know what to do. But he's talking, he's laughing, he now has a circle of friends. It's truly remarkable. Is he worth, you know, making the effort to keep these classes in place? Is he worth it? So tough decisions that you all have to make, I would just encourage you to keep your decisions as far away from programs that allow these kids to experience something bigger than themselves, if you know what I mean.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I have something for you.
For Dr. Sarvis, for our district, he is "The Wiz."
I will wear it proudly.
You guys, you don't need these because you're all on a, you know, we're just thrilled to death when you come and see any of the shows in the district, but you might want to give these to somebody as a voucher. I may speak again, but I don't...
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. And I hope the camera caught the back of your t-shirt. And just to announce the dates again, for "The Wiz," May 3, 4, 5, 9, 10, and 11 at 7:00 PM.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, because prom is better tonight.
Thank you, we don't want to interfere with prom. Okay. Dr. Noel, yes?
I had, run those numbers by a little fast. I had 13, 14, 15.
No, I'm just getting there. I had actually jumped public comment by mistake.
Oh, okay.
So now, yeah, that's it for public comment. Now we're on to our consent agenda and I'll take the numbers. I just wanted to point out that there's an attachment for item D4 on your desk.
I think it would be best if we pulled that so that we can explain this to you.
Get an explanation, great.
We saw that the attachment wasn't there.
Okay, so we're pulling D4. Now, other items.
And you did see the, oh, I'm sorry, this is a different item.
My list included 1, 13, 14, 15, and 21.
I'm sorry, 1, 13, 14, 15?
Yes, and 21.
Mine included 10 and 11.
Did you say 18? Am anybody saying 18 yet?
Not so far.
I'll take 18.
Bingo.
So it's 1...
Okay, I've got it. It's 1, 4...
10.
I'm sorry. 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 18, and 21. Okay, so, we will get back to those items at the end of our evening.
Move to approve the consent agenda with those items pulled.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And none are opposed. It passes unanimously. Now, we're on to our action agenda. And the first item on that is E1, mandatory budget reductions to meet the '06, '07 second interim report multi-year projections.
Good.
Dr. Sarvas?
Ed Diaz, who was going to make this report, is out in surgery. It's a rotator cuff. I understand he's doing fine, but he's not in very good shape to be at tonight's meeting and give the presentation. As you see in his write-up, the reasons for making these cuts are identified. This is part of the district multiple-year projection requirement. It is part of our, not only our follow-up to our interim report, it is also part of the follow-up to the negotiated settlement with Santa Barbara Teachers Association that allows a three-year contract. And what you will see on the, on the bottom line is that we have been talking about a number of potential cuts. The board still has discretionary authority over, well, over all the cuts, but may want to return some $563,000 worth of programs, people, to the budget off of that list. As an introduction to this, you know that you were told last week that we needed to make over $3 million in cuts, and that was based on how the information was presented in the multiple-year commitments. And, let's see, are we bringing that up now? The, okay. On the multiple-year commitments, you have a different, a different lead-up to that. And you'll see that the top of this, yeah, the top of this page is shown in the very same way that you saw it at our last meeting, but the bottom of this page is shown in a different way. And the primary.
Madam President, is this, forgive me, it doesn't look familiar to me.
I think Dr. Sarvas was just explaining that the bottom of it's reformatted in a different way than what we've seen before.
Has this been made available to the public?
I believe it's in the back of the room right now.
Yes. Can we, on the board, have a piece of a hard copy of this?
Certainly. Let's go get hard copies.
It's not on the agenda?
No.
Aren't those the ones that came through email?
It came through email.
It went out Friday afternoon.
My only.
It was mailed out. So.
It was snail mail or email?
No, email.
It came by email.
It was an attachment in email. Go ahead, Ms. Parker.
I just find, I mean, it's great to see it up on the screen, but this document is extremely difficult to read.
Yeah, the colors, it always happens when there are colors around a document. I agree. So, if there are.
And for that reason, I've asked our Director of the Budget, Bob Wolf, to lead you through this document. So, I didn't want to start with this as a starting point without a full explanation. Let me just say, though, that one of the big changes here has been occasioned by, as you'll recall, our list of budget cuts, some of those items were already done. The class size increases that were part of the contractual settlements were already done. So, we didn't think it was appropriate to show those on the budget cut list. Instead, that has been moved forward to this document. Mr. Wolf?
Okay, the document that you see before you, there's a big pink on the side. That signifies the pink section that you saw last week. And so, there's very little changes to that particular section. The future commitment section, as per the board's request, we tried to break out by year so that you can see those items as the commitments. We put in a, we put in the Me Too information for the CSEA in here. This is the commitment for the SBTA for the first year of the multi-year commitment.
Madam President, a point of order here. I'm really, forgive me, Mr. Wolf. I'm thinking about Dr. Sarvas's statement that the class size reduction is already done, it was part of a contract.
No, 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 the class size increase.
Yeah, part of the class size increase.
Did I say reduction?
Yes. Was already done, part of a contract. I don't think that the board explicitly, with a properly agendized item, voted for a class size increase. They voted, did vote to approve the contract. And therefore, I don't quite understand how, how that can be left off as an explicit item of the agenda where the public has an opportunity to comment on it. I just can't put that together.
It was part of the negotiated settlement.
But the board, so you are saying that, that it does not have to be an agendized item for a budget cut as part of the settlement? Because I recall in the discussion of the negotiation, the settlement, that the idea was, yes, okay, now we've made a settlement, now we have to go out and decide where we're going to get the money, and that is a public session item. And we have a lot of things in that category, but why not class size increase? Why is that singled out?
We understood that in your approval and negotiating the settlement, that you were giving us direction to go to class size increase.
That was part of, that's one of the, one of the items that's part of the negotiation.
Yes.
That's separate from budget cuts.
When was that discussed in public?
Well, when we ratified the agreement.
Yes.
So, you're saying, you're saying.
And when the agreement was proposed, when we had the agreement presented.
Let me have Dr. Robertson address the issue.
Before we present any kind of settlement, we have to bring it to the public for open reading. So, it was presented at two different board meetings about, so the public could comment on it prior to the ratification by the teachers and prior to the ratification by the board.
Okay. But now, we're talking about budget cuts, okay? We're not, we're not talking about the settlement agreement. We understand that the settlement agreement committed the district and the board to come up with some savings. I understand that. And that logic has been crystal clear all along. Now, where the savings and the cuts are made is a different question, and it's, I thought, what the agenda was about tonight. And I just hate to have it swept under the carpet that all of a sudden, we've had a major class size increase without that being an item on its, stands on its own merits as agendized, or at least on a list, so that we have an opportunity for the public to react to it. Because I have certainly been getting reactions from the public about the class size increase.
Dr. Noel, in the, in the two contractual items that were put on the agenda, it had explicit mention of class size reduction. Now, it's also reflected, I'm, thank you, I'm sorry, class size increase. And it's also reflected at the top of that chart there. So, as far as I'm concerned, it is open for public discussion. It takes our budget talks in a very different direction building up to this point, but there's nothing to prevent that kind of discussion this evening.
See, well, that's part, that's part of my problem, Madam President. Because, because I look at this now, and, yeah, it's here, it's now, it's live, it's real time, okay? I'm thinking about what the public, when they look at the published agenda for these meetings, can make sense of. Do they know what's really going to be happening on the agenda? Is it listed? We're going to consider increasing class size, and we're going to make a decision on that. This is, it's part of, I'm troubled by this whole, the way this has been proceeding because it is not clear and transparent from a public point of view. In fact, one attachment to tonight's agenda was not even on the website as of noon yesterday. So, it's, you know, not a, not a part of the agenda. So, what are the people at home? I would, I would turn it this way. Why are so few people here if they know what this board is about to do tonight?
Go ahead, Ms. Cordero.
Okay. I think we're talking about two different things. The letters that we have been getting from, from members of the public have to do with the elimination of class size reduction. That is a different thing than class size increase. Class size increase is the, the increase in the general classes that we negotiated with the bargaining unit that is not, I have not received any letters, nor have I been forwarded any letters from the district office regarding the general class size increase. All of the letters that I have received are focused on the elimination of class size reduction.
At the ninth grade level.
And at the ninth grade level. And I think the fact that so few people are here is an indication that they did understand that this was not about class size reduc, the elimination of class size reduction at ninth grade, that in fact, this is just about the general one, or two to three students' increase that we negotiated as part of the contract. And we did approve it, and it was presented. And I'm a little baffled as to why this is a matter of contention at this point.
Ms. Parker, go ahead.
I have to agree with Mrs. Cordero that every communication that I've received has been, has been about the concern about ninth grade class size and whether we are looking at increasing that. I really feel like the public did understand that we went through the negotiation process, we discussed the settlement. Part of the settlement was increasing class sizes in, at different amounts for different grade levels, but that was there. And that that's something that's already been discussed.
Well, I would say it was certainly a prominent feature of the media exposure during contract negotiations and the conclusion that it would entail having to make general class size increases in order to meet the financial thresholds for the salary requirements. And once again, I would underscore the fact that all of the emails that I've been receiving have been about class size reduction, not about class size increase. Shall we proceed with Mr. Wolf's presentation?
Again, this is the format that the board requested at the last meeting to try to break it down by year-by-year basis. So, what we did is we tried to do that. We, in keeping with the tradition of the board, we put the salary settlements for each of the bargaining, or each of the groups, at the same level in this particular year so you could see the adjusting ending fund balance. You would need mandatory, now, this takes into account that there is a 3% reserve at the top of the, at the top of the page, right here. This is the 3% reserve for both districts, individually and together. When you look at the first-year commitment, the elementary school district's going to come up about $657,000 short if the agreement happens, and we pay the agreement as of, before June 30th.
I just want to stop you for one second, Mr. Wolf. And that is to say, under future commitments, the first three items, SBTA, CSEA, and Management Confidential, the assumption is CSEA and Management Confidential will share in the same salary increases that have been negotiated by SBTA, but with regard to those items, line items 32 and 33, those are assumptions at this point in time, correct?
Only for the Management Confidential. You haven't approved an agreement with the CSEA.
CSEA, thank you.
They said a Me Too language. This is, this represents the 1.5% Me Too language increase that, to their salary schedule as opposed to the 1.5 they negotiated earlier in the year to their health and welfare benefits.
Thank you for that correction.
As far as I know, right now, there is no agreement with the Management Confidential So, again, these all assume, these are all based on the assumption that these are going to be the ending fund balances in the current year. These are the estimated ending fund balances. As you can see, there's a cash transfer required to make 3%. That will leave a zero balance here. You'll have this much left over, and that's the estimated right now. When you apply the salary agreement schedules, you end up with a little bit less than that. And again, the elementary school district is short cash, and I don't know that there's any place to make budget cuts. Now, that's one of the reasons why we're probably looking at the retros in the 27, 27, 28 year. Now, we move down to the 27, 28 year. Again, this is this negotiated agreement. Based on the negotiated agreement approved by the board and my numerical calculations of the increase in the class sizes in the general population, this is the savings that's going to happen. That's mostly all in the secondary districts since that's mostly where it occurs. The CSE opener proposal, I believe, they have talked to personnel, and they've indicated that they would like, again, a Me Too language for this particular year. So, that's what this indicates. And since the tradition is that everybody gets the same thing, I just, just put that in for the Management Confidential. We have a, we have a problem in the districts in that, just like any other school district in the state of California, as you get into technology and increased technology, nobody ever puts a reserve away to replace that technology. As it goes bad, servers go down and things like that. So, we've instituted a policy now for technology reserve, a very small amount each year to start building toward that when we have to replace computers and servers and others, other hardware apparatus. The other post-employment benefits hits us this year. That's GASB 45 that we've talked about before. The contractual health benefit, that's the 1% increase to the salary schedule, on the health and welfare benefits for the district contribution that we know about that's in contract. This represents the release of teachers that the board approved on March 13th. We come down, the elementary school district in this year actually has a positive balance that they can give the cash back. And as we go into the, let's move this up, to the 8, 9 year, again, this is the contractual agreement with the teachers, with the compaction of their salary schedule. The increase, we figure that because of the decreasing enrollment, that we'll lose at least another six FTE. Reserve for future commitments was added to this for the, either the CSEA and/or the management negotiations. Technology, again, other post-employment benefits. And so, you basically come down with two, two and a half million dollars, a million dollars in the elementary school district and 1.1 in the high school district.
Questions by board members so far? I have one question regarding the 3% reserve for elementary. That is the reserve as shown on paper.
That's correct.
Okay. But there's, there's no reason to, well, I suppose there could in the future be reason to transfer funds from secondary to elementary, but that's the reserve as reflected on paper. And should funds have to be transferred from secondary to elementary for actual spending purposes, we would have to have a public meeting?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be brought to your, to the public meeting at that time?
I. Go ahead, Ms. Parker.
I do have a question about that 657, 657,557, based on future commitments. And the concern there is the retroactive salary that's due back to July 1st of last year. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, according to our settlement, our negotiated contract, when are we due to pay those retroactive?
Well, it has to be approved by the county first.
Uh-huh.
And we can't get those documents to the county first until you have made a decision on what budget cuts you're making.
But assuming.
Because right now, as it stands, your agreement, the agreement with the SBTA will not pass the county muster. They will not approve it.
Right. But assuming that we get this taken care of tonight, what's the natural progression?
The natural progression is, is we have to put the financial information into a document acceptable by the county, and they have, I think, 10 days after they receive that to get, to get, to make a decision on that.
Okay. I'm just concerned because I don't want teachers to be feeling like, because I'm not, I'm not clear here. If you're suggesting that we're going to need to somehow negotiate paying them a month later.
Actually, the teachers ask that they receive a separate paycheck. That's in, that's not, that's not a capability of the system unless we manually do every check separately. The only way that we can pay them on a separate paycheck is to pay them in the month of July because most of them don't get a paycheck in July.
Okay.
Because they're on a 10-month basis. And so, that would be the only way that we could actually physically give them a separate paycheck.
So, presumably, this time, you're talking with the SBTA about this and?
They brought that up in their, in the negotiation.
Okay.
Anything further, Mr. Wolf?
Not on this guy.
Okay.
Well, what you see on the, the attachment on the budget cut list is.
It's on the back, it's on the backside of.
Essentially, essentially the same list you saw last week. There are a couple of changes, and I'd like to point out those changes. One is that there was class. One is that there was class size increase, which I believe was the confusion from before, and that was marked as done. Well, we just talked about that in the context of what the current salary agreement is. The other was that we had a discussion last week about the elimination of ninth grade class size reduction. And at the board's direction, we broke that out so that we show separately math, ninth grade class size reduction in math and class size reduction in English. And importantly, I wanted you to see the number of positions that were attached to that. Again, I will make the same plea that I'm concerned about the loss of positions, the loss of capable people from our system. And that's particularly important here where in the elimination of ninth grade class size reduction, that's shown down under low priority one. That's 15 positions. Now, the cost of that to the district is $99,000. These positions cost us much more than $99,000. That's the cost of just one position. But we bring in a lot of state and federal money for ninth grade class size reduction. So this $99,000 is the difference between what it actually costs us for salary and benefits for those 15 people and what we bring in from the state for class size reduction for those 15 people. The second area is the elimination of class size reduction in English. This represents 21 positions. And between these two areas, we sent out an additional 36 layoff notices based on this reduction. Again, it costs us a lot more than the $138,000 shown for these 21 positions, but then we get a significant amount of money from state and federal funds, and this is simply the difference. So, you know, I would prefer to say that these 21 positions only cost us $140,000. You also see the other positions shown under low priority two, reduction of general fund support for seventh, eighth grade electives. These are people. And important people in the elective program. And you see the same, the same in low priority three, reduced district support for elementary music program. These are positions. And these are people in our system. One other question the board had had at the last meeting was that if you look at the columns, you see that all of these items have item numbers. You see a couple are marked as done right at the top of the list under 2006, 2007. You see that most of them are in the middle column under 2007, 08. Some continue into the last column, which is 2008, 09. And my understanding, and Mr. Wolf, I'd like you to verify this or correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that you need to make cuts to these amounts, they don't necessarily have to be these items, but to these amounts, with the exception of some $563,000 worth of cuts, which can be in that middle column. In other words, these are things that would not have, have to be made at all, and they could be held from this next year. So those, those $563,000 in add backs to the budget could be added back this next year.
Questions, comments so far?
Mr. Wolf, was I right about that?
Yes, sir, you were.
Mr. Wolf, I don't know if you have any comments that you want to make about this particular chart?
No, ma'am. You've seen this before. We've just arranged it a little bit in a different manner, that's all.
Okay.
Madam President, I wondered if, if we could talk about the procedure and the process that's going to, how, how the board is going to decide. Will, will board members have an opportunity to make suggestions that are not on this list?
Certainly.
And we're going to deal with these item by item, not-
Well, actually, what I was going to suggest, and we can discuss the process right now, perhaps, and then take some public comment, if that's the extent of the staff. Okay, well, hang on one second. What I was going to suggest is, and you'll tell me how you feel about this, is that we assume that we will cut, we will make cuts, see, I'm not, I'm looking at it, up to where we start listing priorities. And then when we get to the priority questions, we discuss those item by item. And that was how we originally began this discussion several weeks ago, when we, each of us identified priority items.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, do you, are you suggesting that we will adopt all of those cuts sort of at once?
That would be my suggestion.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood what the-
We can certainly, we can certainly go line by line or group by group or certain-
No, I'm not suggesting anything else. I just want to clarify, make sure that I understood what the suggestion was.
Go ahead, Ms. Parker, did you? Dr. Noel?
Yes, I, I had asked, when it says release secondary administrator, may we know what position is being discussed here?
That was a layoff that was approved by the board. It was an AP position for the continuation high schools.
And again, the increased class sizes, I think, for the public and for me, one more explanation of that, because it's $392,000, right?
Uh-
Where are you looking at?
Am I reading that wrong?
I'm s-
Yes, I thought that's the one we were referring to.
Which item is that?
We took, we took that one off and we put it onto the other slide.
It was incorporated into the other slide.
That's correct. The true mathematical, or the, the actual mathematical calculation was about 39 FTE. And we did 32 instead of 39. So if, if the board really wanted to push the extra five or the extra six to the extent possible with the different calendar starts, that's something that you could look at and do. But we removed that since it was not thought that that was going to be a feasible thing to do.
Go ahead, Dr. Noel, you had other clarifications?
I'm still sorting through this.
Okay.
And these are, there are some questions about the EIA sup-
Yes, there were questions about this, the supplanting questions, those two items. Mr. Zettel, you were going to make some comment?
Yes. On the April 24th list, right?
Yes.
Yes, I had-
It's still on this list. It's items 34 and 35.
But that would be part of this block that we're about to potentially vote on as a group.
Where I think we're about to get some clarification.
Under attachment E1 that I'm looking at on the, on the back page for tonight's work, it's number, item number 20, use EIA funds for secondary supplemental math and a, a figure of $200,000. The question was, could we do that without supplanting or could we supplement? And it's a very complex question. We went all the way to the feds to get some answers. And it's a very particular, I don't know how to say this very simply. We can move those classes outside the school day and get the savings because then we can use EIA funds. We can also use the funds to buy down class size as a supplement. That we can do. But to use the funds for courses that are within the sixth period day would, in my mind, be a supplant after I've read all of the information. That would be supplant. So we'd have to make some moves to move the, those courses inside, or excuse me, outside the day to a seventh period to get the savings.
Or to reduce class size.
Or it could be used to reduce class size, yes. Those funds could help out with-
But it could potentially still represent a $200,000 savings.
It could potentially represent that, yes.
Okay. And then what about the TIG block grant?
TIG is fine.
Okay.
We're good there.
And then Ms. Swasky, did you have some comments?
No, we just had that one minor one with the newcomer program, and we reduced that to the difference between the staffing position and the, the difference in the, the two people at one site.
Okay.
So we thought that was a more reasonable amount to count on.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, let me ask then, because I think you had explained to me that as a part of our regular curriculum, we are obliged to have special attention, pay special attention to the needs of English and English learners. And that anything that, so that's part of the regular curriculum. And that these EIA funds are to supplement that. And if they all, if they all go to zero period or after school, what, I mean, I presume there's still an English language learning, learner program in school so that we can make a clear distinction between the, the one and the other.
Yeah, I think we should describe what a newcomer program is.
Is that what you're speaking to, the newcomer program? Or are you talking about any supplemental services or curriculum for English?
I'm talking about supplement, I'm talking about-
I think, I think, Dr. Noel, speaking generically, English language learner program, whether elementary or secondary.
Yeah.
Okay. It is a requirement to serve the needs of those English learners, providing them with English language development. That doesn't have to be in a supplemental class or, or period with-
I understand. In fact, it can't be. You have to do it out of your regular budget, as you explained to me before.
That's true.
All I'm saying is, is there any of that remaining in the, in the regular day or are we pushing all of that into before school, after school?
No. What, what we're confusing, I believe, is the instructional program that we're required to provide. And then within the staffing ratio, we provide, according to our staffing, the number of, for the core, core curriculum. And for our English learners, part of their core curriculum is English language development. But when we provide additional staff members, either in a newcomer situation in elementary or an additional period of math or English or something that supplements the core, that's when the categorical programs are supplemental and appropriately used. Otherwise, they're supplanting our staffing ratio for core program. Does that-
That I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we wish to hear public comment at this point? And I, I'm going to close public comment at this point. So if you don't have a speaker slip in, yes? Are there any other speaker slips to come forward? Okay, then we're closing public comment and we will proceed. Ms. Malakoff will call your name. Three minutes with a 30-second warning, and I think that just about covers it. Go ahead.
Maggie Mason, followed by Mike Zarotti.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Sarvis. I've been a teacher for 18 years. For 15 of those years, I've taught ninth grade English, 13 years at Dos Pueblos High School. And it's with sadness that I've watched the increasing mechanization and standardization of the English curriculum, both nationally and locally, and also watching a concomitant decrease of personalized instruction. But happily, the 20 to 1 student teacher ratio in ninth grade English has preserved a place for personalized, one-on-one writing and reading instruction for students at what I consider to be a critical, vulnerable time in their young scholastic lives. A time when they're forming habits of mind that will inform and shape their chances for academic success in high school and beyond. My area of expertise is in writing, and I can say that there's almost no more powerful tool than one-on-one conferencing with writing and intensive feedback. Small classes in ninth grade provide an opportunity to promote intensive writing and critical thinking instruction that can have a lasting impact, an opportunity to launch a good ship, if you will. Your stated mission is improving literacy, and it is the stated mission of this district, this board, and of our school. It's a mission that my colleagues and I eat, sleep, and breathe. And I urge you not to make the mistake of being penny wise and pound foolish, and I urge you to retain the 20 to 1 ratio for our ninth graders. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Mike Zarotti, followed by, sorry, Carol Pasternak.
Madam President, board, I have copies of this discussion for anybody in the audience. I emailed both Dr. Sarvis and the board a four-page letter and a spreadsheet today. The spreadsheet gave Dr. Sarvis an opportunity to correct the math errors that he showed you tonight in this schedule. He didn't make those math error corrections. I did give him a fair warning about that, so check the math in those reports given to you. This letter was also sent to all the news media today by email. Hopefully, they'll do some reporting on it. I want to talk about the board brief document that you got from the Santa Barbara County Education Office discussing your first interim report and all of the negative things in there. And I'd like to get an assurance from the board and the district that all of those suggestions have indeed been reflected in this budget proposal. One of the biggest things is the going concern. Your auditors have said that this and other conditions, you have, you failed to meet your 3% reserves. And your auditors have told you in a, in a statement that this and other conditions raise substantial doubt about the district's ability to continue as a going concern. And I believe that the private sector enterprises, we're told by their auditors that they have a going concern problem, they might do the following. One, the Board of Education might consider giving up their salary and health benefits. Why should the students take the hit for this budget deficit? I think those people who are elected should not be paid. The management might consider a, across-the-board decrease of 5 to 10% for anyone making more than $100,000. And maybe we could terminate at least one executive in each of the districts. I have many other comments in here. One of the major items that I'm concerned about is the county, again, has said that the Santa Barbara school districts, quote, "have overestimated their ADA for subsequent years." In other words, we are concerned that the districts may not be reflecting the severity of the downward trend. I don't think their budgets that they showed you have any reflection for the fact you're not going to have as much revenue in future years. If you're not going to have as much revenue, you're going to have other cuts you're going to have to make. So they talk about the cafeteria fund and how you have subsidized the cafeteria fund to the tune of over $1.2 million over the last few years. And they want to know, are you going to be repaid by the cafeteria fund? Is of $500,000. Now, is that in your revenue number? Where does that, how does that play into the budget? And I think as a closing comment, I think that if you, I don't think there's been enough detail presented to the public or to the board to make a decision. And I think that any action by the, to reduce programs tonight would be, in my opinion, a failure of your fiduciary and legal oversight responsibilities.
Thank you. Carol Pasternak, followed by John Cook.
First of all, I want to say something about why there are so few people here. It's because there has been no coverage in the Santa Barbara news press of this whole issue. And every time I talk to somebody that I meet who has kids in the public schools and I mention this, they say, "Oh, I didn't know." So I don't think it's because of any conspiracy on the part of the board, but it, but I think it's very important to bring in more community involvement. There was discussion last week about the possibility of moving as many cuts as possible to the next year in order to, among other things, form a budget committee, which could bring in community involvement, community input, and I think that would be extremely valuable. We have, in addition to the excellent board members, we have a very powerful population here, wealthy, bright, creative, and we should make use of that in trying to think through this crisis in a more creative kind of way. In addition, I want to stress that while I am an English professor and I think that the 20 student cap on English is extremely important, I also think it's very important on math. Maybe because I'm part of the Sputnik generation, I think it's important that we keep up our math skills and that we promote them on students. And I also recall that algebra is in fact, one of the things that students have a hard time, have a hard time with passing, in terms of passing their exit exam. So I think it would be a mistake to make that change in class cap limits there as well. Finally, although I understand the points about the IB and gate cuts, that they're administrative cuts only, they're not eliminating the programs, the IB one was planned for, I want to in general say that it's important not to forget the kids in- I want to in general say that it's important not to forget the kids in, in our schools who are extremely bright and extremely talented. We want to keep them in our schools. We don't want them going elsewhere. We want to keep those families involved, and we want to keep them, bringing in those high test scores, and we also want to keep them as intellectual and academic leaders in our community. So we do need to be thinking about supporting not just the kids who need a lot of help, who do, who do need full support, but also the kids who are at the brighter gifted end. Thank you.
Thank you. John Cook, followed by David Holmes.
Thank you, board members. I am not an English teacher. I am married to one. I work out at UCSB. I am deeply concerned about the possibility of increasing the ninth-grade class size. I think that is the wrong thing to do at this time. You all have made it very clear that the federal and state funds that go with that mean that these teachers are, you know, you're actually saving a very small amount of money and potentially losing a great deal of money. I have a son coming into San Marcos next year, and I want to make sure that that school is not affected by those kinds of cuts. I think you need to look very hard at some of these other issues. And again, I consider the teachers to be the troops in the field on this topic, and I think you need to look very carefully at central administrative and executive cuts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Holmes.
Well, I'm up here this time to draw your attention to item 10 on here, the elimination of Curriculum Council, elementary and secondary. You know, I've been teaching for 24 years. I've served on-site on Curriculum Council. It's my third term, and in every year that I have served on Curriculum Council, there have been attempts to increase requirements, graduation requirements, and administrative decisions that really affect the electives area, and I have had to fight almost every time that I've served on Curriculum Council to try to maintain the integrity of the electives by encroaching requirements. One thing that this district is lacking right now is institutional memory, and you're only going to get that by getting the seasoned teachers on that Curriculum Council to give you some perspective. So I'd be real careful about eliminating that as an advisory body. Although, you know, 24 years of, of teaching, I really don't look forward to any additional meetings outside of my, my time, my classroom time. That's where the real work happens. But we have to protect what's, what's so dear to us, and in the electives, we fight for it all the time. Second item has to do with possible elimination of junior high school electives. Critical, it's absolutely critical for the strength of the secondary programs and the high school programs to have full elective programs in the junior highs. Try to avoid cutting there at all costs. It really has a long-lasting effect on the health of, of the electives. And I'm going to include athletic pursuits as well. I mean, what I spoke about earlier, trying to get these kids to belong to something bigger than themselves, that's another critical area that we need to always protect and support. And lastly, I know it's way down low priority three, but it always stops our hearts when we see elementary music again facing the chopping block, and I would just encourage you to make all of your cuts. These are important decisions you have to make, but make them as far away from these specialty programs as you can. Be careful of losing the input-
30 seconds.
... of your seasoned staff. You eliminate this Curriculum Council, you're losing a, a critical component for advice to this district. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public-
Thank you. So now we are back to board discussion. Any questions? And certainly that, that process question. How do people wish to proceed? I threw a suggestion out there. I, I didn't see any, I mean, there was a little bit of discussion at that point, but I don't know if that's how my colleagues wish to proceed.
Can you repeat your, your suggestion?
My suggestion was, if you're looking at item numbers on the sheet that's in front of us, to deal with item numbers 1 through 21 as one block, or in sections, and then under items 22 to 28, deal with them as individual items.
I, I would agree with that. I, I do want to make one comment about item number five.
Mm-hmm.
Eliminate general fund substitute cost for in-service days during the school day. I was actually sort of surprised at the amount of money that is, 250,000, because professional development and in-service, I would expect normally for substitute costs to come from categorical funds. Title II, and then anything, if you're doing something special like Suzanne Moutreau, whatever, there are different categorical funds that would support that. So I want to be very clear that I, I support cutting general fund encroachment for that, but that does not mean that it's not appropriate for in-service days to happen. They just need to be paid for through categorical funds, and I hope that there are some available to do that.
I'll let staff respond to that.
I'd be happy to respond to that. In the first place, we do have some general fund money that's being used for in-services during the school day, when people are sent out to conferences, for example. Not only does that affect the instructional program, a day without a teacher has an effect instructionally on students, but it does affect, probably even more importantly, the pool of substitutes. And when we allow those activities during the instructional day paid for by non-general fund monies, then we put a lot of stress on that substitute pool. What we end up doing is that for people who are taking an absence for another reason, it may be sick leave, it may be a professional day, we do not have enough substitutes to cover those days. As a result, at the secondary level, we hire in our substitutes from teachers who are, who during their prep period can fill in and take a class. Well, to do so costs us just twice as much as it does to hire a substitute during that day. So it's not simply a matter of general fund money being used for substitutes on these days, it's also the problem of any use of substitutes on these days, whether it's funded by general fund or funded by categorical money, reducing the pool of substitutes available, therefore costing us, out of the general substitute use, twice as much. In other words, $200 a day rather than $100 a day.
Although I could see that then, if you're going to do something, a special in, in-service, you could plan to use teachers, your, your in-house staff, and pay for that through categorical funds rather than paying for the substitutes, and just planning on it being more expen, you know, more expensive. But I, I think that this is-
Yes.
-sort of off, and maybe a different agenda item, but that is something to talk about because I'm concerned about us reducing the amount of professional development in-service days and making sure that our teachers have the training that they need if it's moved to voluntary.
Yes, although it's not our intention to reduce professional development, it is our intention to reduce it during the instructional day and to move it to outside the instructional day. In fact, I would rather hire a teacher after hours to attend training than hire a substitute to take their place during the instructional day.
So you would be paying the teachers to come after school?
Yes.
Through categorical funds?
Right. Go ahead, Ms. Malakoff.
We also, I, I just want to remind you that we also increased what we were paying substitutes in hopes of building our pool, and we have not been very successful in doing so.
Does staff want to address the Curriculum Council?
Well, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's a, it's very different at elementary than it is at secondary level, and that the work that's done at the elementary is different. It's, it's a little bit more informational. There are decisions made that we could pull people together. Secondary has a whole different service to the district, to the teachers with, with that as far as new classes and that kind of thing. As far as the elementary district, and it's a very little bit of money compared, there's many ways we can get around that with more site visits, more time when, when people can meet together, and for big decisions, we can bring the, the specialists on the sites together for those kinds of things. So I don't see it as a large program, problem at the elementary level, and teachers I've talked to said the same thing. They will miss it, but it's not one of those essential things, and that's not a survey from everybody, but that's just some comments I've had.
At the secondary level, we, I, I had this discussion with Curriculum Council at our last meeting, and it's very clear to me that the stipends that we pay for their work coming to the meetings, I think we can supplement in other ways. We have dollars that we can use for professional learning communities. I'd like to see our district department chairs meeting with the entire departments of all of the schools, maybe all of the junior high English people, all of the senior high English people. We need to see more of that, but I feel like we can do that through different funding means. This is a matter of beginning to shift priorities to categorical programs where they're going to do the most good in trying to save our general fund. So we need to be creative with doing that, and maybe the old way of doing things is not the most efficient. We need to hear certainly from our experienced teachers and our most experienced department chairs. They're invaluable in, in terms of the advice that they can give and the, and the thoughtfulness with, you know, which they approach their departments and the work that they do, but I think we can look at other ways of funding that. I'm convinced that we can. It just takes a little will and a little skill.
Thank you. Then I'd like to make a motion then, can I?
I'm sorry, could, could I just ask a question? Sure. I had a question about item 14, reduce staff ratios at small elementary schools. Could you just explain that just in general in terms of what the, the ratio would be and how, what, how that would produce the savings?
Yes, I gave a report to the board in October, November. It was on, on support ratios in elementary schools. Our elementary schools, whether they have 380 students or whether they have 600 students, have a support ratio that, that is about the same. There are some small differences, but for example, each of those schools has an office manager, school secretary, they each have additional office clerical support, they each have a health assistant. Most of those ratios are at about the same level, regardless of the size of the school. They have a, a library specialist. Most of those are, there's one small school, perhaps two, at a lower ratio, but most of the schools are staffed on the same basis, the same number of hours regardless of the number of students. They each have a custodian and a night custodian, and most of those are staffed on the same basis. And the idea was that if we're looking ahead toward the possibility of closing an elementary school, we should look first at the possibility of reducing the cost because wouldn't we all like to have our students educated in, in elementary schools of only 350 students? If we could run those as efficiently on a cost basis as a school of some 600 students. So if we can bring those ratios down, then we may not need to close an elementary school. In fact, we don't know that we can anyway on a, on a-
I wonder if I could ask a, a question before we move to-
Sure, Dr. Noel.
I wonder, Dr. Sarvis, the one thing I'm missing here is a recommendation from the superintendent as to, particularly, I'm, I'm hearing the words of Mr. Holmes and others, that we want to keep the impact as far from students as possible, and I wonder what your judgment as superintendent and, is about this list and whether you see them all equal. I see there's some lower priorities down here, and I'm not sure what that means, but it seems to me a recommendation from you would be very appropriate right about now.
No, Dr. Noel, just let me, let me clarify. We're talking about right now, items 1 through 21, and then we're going to continue with discussion of items 22 through 28. And I'm certain that Dr. Sarvis may have a recommendation, but I'm, is that clear?
Well-
Okay, okay.
Sort of waiting for Dr. Sarvis to respond.
Well, it is, although those priorities, even though those priorities might be in our lower, the lower priority one, priority two, priority three category would then affect these decisions as well. At our last meeting, I made a plea to keep talented staff, and I believe that our ninth-grade class size reduction is a primary area where we can keep talented staff, so I would set that as a priority. I would set the reduction of general fund support for seventh, eighth grade electives as a priority, and I would set the reduction of district support for elementary music program as a priority. Now, if you add those numbers together, they come to more than $563,000. So there would have to be some adjustment within those, but if you were to ask me for my priorities, they are very close to your priorities because these items were designated as priorities by board members at our last meetings.
Well, not quite all of them. I see a bunch of recommendations I made about the cafeteria subsidy, about the transportation program, and I'm suggesting tonight that we consider not replacing the assistant superintendent for secondary for at least a year. And I don't, I, I rather don't like to see those as low priorities. It seems to me some of those are, are at least on a par with some of the ones in the first group.
Well, I was simply saying that these priorities were set by board members. We didn't make these up. You did here in a board meeting.
Did the board vote on the priorities, Dr. Sarvis?
No, we did not. And actually, I, I would like to, to try and, and further to the, the discussion, and that is that we need to make a decision tonight regarding making our second interim report, reflecting cuts in order to match the amount needed for our salary negotiations, although our budget discussions will continue, and any one of those items could come forward as part of the further budget discussions. Anyway, board members, how do you wish to? I, I think Ms. Malakoff was about to make a motion.
Just that we, I move that we make 1 through 21, that we cut those items from our budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to move to amend. I'd like to delete the Curriculum Council pending further study, the, from that list.
Okay. Does the maker of the motion wish to?
No.
Okay, well then we'll deal with the amendment. All those in favor of eliminating Curriculum Council from-
I'm giving a second.
I'm sorry, you're right.
I'll second it.
Me and my effort trying to.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So it's a motion by, an amendment by Dr. Noel, second by Ms. Parker. Discussion on the amendment. Then a vote. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
So it's for one, I'm sorry, one for, Dr. Noel in favor, four opposed. So we will proceed with the, the main motion, items 1 through 21 being eliminated, and we had a second from Ms. Cordero, is that correct?
Yeah.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So that passes unanimously.
I'd like to explain my vote if I may.
Certainly, Dr. Noel.
I, I feel fairly strongly about the Curriculum Council issue, but, but in order to move ahead with the rest of them, I, I voted in favor of, of leaving it in there.
Yeah, I, Dr. Noel, I think a lot of us are, are, I don't know, taking a hard, taking a hard swallow tonight in order to move forward.
I agree. May I also make a comment on the circumstances? You know, a lot of these items were put on the list not because there were things that we wanted to do away with. We were asked to, to generate items that, that there was a possibility that we could live without. We were asked to put on the list any items that cost money out of the general fund that were not normally funded through student ADA, and we brought those items forward, but- And we brought those items forward, but, but these are tough decisions. And I heard a comment earlier about, oh, about the, the county's going concern language. Well, we purposely brought that to the board for a reason, and that was to emphasize the need for major cuts. In fact, in Ed Diaz's memo, he says very clearly, "The cuts are necessary to meet the multi-year projection requirements of the interim report, of the interim budget report, to fund the recent raises agreed to by all parties and to address the going concern comment from the, from the auditor, which was then reiterated by the county ed office." And all of this is simply to say that, that these are very tough decisions. It doesn't mean we don't like programs. It means that we need a balanced budget. We need a healthy budget. And making the 3% reserve doesn't make it a particularly healthy budget. That is the minimum. And that's what, that's what we're about tonight.
Okay. In moving forward, oh, I was, I was, what I was actually going to say in moving forward was I would like to begin with class size ratio. I suspect Ms. Malikoff was about to make a motion on that. Do you want to make your motion?
I move that we keep or not eliminate, I don't know how else to say that.
Keep, keep current class size ratios in place, okay.
For ninth grade class, yeah.
Math and English.
I'm just doing English. I'm doing English first. I'm doing English all by itself.
Why don't you do them together?
Uh, no, I'd rather just do English if that's okay.
Second your motion, Ms. Malikoff.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Noel. All those in favor of preserving the current class size ratio for English signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'd like to move. I'd like to make, I'd like to make the same motion with respect to math.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So that was Dr. Noel and Ms. Cordero.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor of preserving current class size reductions in math signify by saying aye. Was there something you wanted to say, Ms. Malikoff?
Sorry.
It was more about before, but it's okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
All those in favor of preserving current class size ratios in math, in ninth grade mathematics signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam President.
Certainly.
I'd like to eliminate the possible reduction of seventh and eighth grade electives.
I, I would actually, I don't know if, if Mr. Wolf, if you are sitting there with a calculator? Yes?
No.
It would be, I think it would be extremely helpful because I think we're going to end up here splitting hairs as we move further down the list.
I think we have about 320 or so to play with.
To, to, to go. Okay, thank you.
I, I did make a motion.
Yeah, and it was, Dr. Noel has a motion on the table to preserve general fund support for seventh and eighth grade electives. And was there a second? Okay, it fails. And I think primarily because it's a $660,000 item when we have about $320,000 worth of discretion left. Why don't we?
Then, then would it be, what were those numbers again?
About 320,000.
Well, may I make the same motion, but minus, taking the 660 minus the, the difference so that at least as much of the seventh and eighth grade elective programs can be saved as possible.
Okay. I want to make it clear that everything else on the list would then be out of contention. Before we proceed.
That was, that was a motion, Madam.
Oh, okay.
By the way, we did a quick calculation. That would be half of the seventh, eighth grade electives.
And I'll, I'll second the motion.
$326,000.
Okay. So we have a second on the table so that we can have discussion. So motion by Dr. Noel, second by Ms. Parker. And actually, it would be to apply whatever is the exact remainder toward the elective programs in seventh and eighth grade. And here is my question. What is the impact then on the elementary music program?
It would have to be eliminated.
Completely, in spite of the block grant. I'm sorry, the.
But the issue with that, I could see is that you're, you would be eliminating junior high music. So I think it's more important to save junior high music and work for other funding sources to, because I would hate to see our elementary kids get it and then it just disappears.
Go ahead, Ms. Cordero.
Well, I'm wondering, I'm concerned about eliminating the district support for junior high school after-school sports.
I have a problem with it too.
Especially as we, as we've talked about trying to, and in light of some of the public meetings that we've attended recently and the concern that was expressed for providing alternatives for youth in the community. Is there a likelihood that we could obtain that, those funds someplace else? Or is the likelihood that that would, that we would simply have to cut that program?
Well, I think right now the likelihood is that it would have to be cut, and it also accesses matching money from the city of Santa Barbara. Although what, one of the things I was going to suggest with regard to that would be reducing it in some way to include only those programs that are highly subscribed to, because it's divided up by season, football season, et cetera, et cetera.
We were.
But I don't know if we could use safe schools money for anything like that.
Well, we were hoping to find other funds, especially in that the state gave us a, a number of funding sources, and one of those was the much-heralded after-school program on the part of the governor. And we were hoping that this could apply. That does not fit this description though, and it would have to look considerably different. Mr. Zettel knows more about it than I do.
We've, we've really looked at ways within our budget that we could fund the $60,000. Now, you also realize that this agreement with the Parks and Rec is a quid pro quo with, with the elementary program. We may be losing that program if we lose this program. The only place that I can think to gain that kind of money is through foundations or through public donation, because AB, or excuse me, Senate Bill 49 doesn't fit this. The program that's at La Cumbre right now, it doesn't fit. It's more of a tutorial program for after-school, the governor's after-school program. We really don't have anything that we can use. The safety money right now all goes for YSSs and campus security. And there's actually not enough for campus security.
Could you remind, what, what elementary school program does this tie into that gets also cut?
It's the AOK program. The city gives a substantial amount. I don't know if it's quite 60,000, but it equals in, in kind, it's that they give to that program.
So that we get.
And so it balances out. So I, I don't know how the city would feel if we took that money. They may not be willing to then provide the support for the AOK program.
And there's also money from the city of Guelda.
Madam President, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying very hard to think of a way, procedurally perhaps you can help. Is there a way we can, see, I, I can, I'd like to be able to make some suggestions of other cuts that may not be on this list that would avoid eliminating the electives.
Okay.
Bring that number back up and, and also hopefully find a way to save the elementary music program. But there's a motion on the table, and so I, that's where I'm stuck. I don't.
Okay. Who made the motion?
I did.
And who seconded, Ms. Parker? Dr. Noel, would you want to withdraw? And Ms. Parker, would you withdraw your second? And then we'll continue with the discussion based on what Dr. Noel would like put, put on the table.
Sure.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Noel.
Well, I would like to, I'd like to make a motion to eliminate, to, to not refill the, or not replace, refill the assistant super, not fill the assistant superintendent for secondary education position for at least one year.
So do you want to frame that in terms of a motion?
I move that the, that the district not replace Mr. Zettel upon his retirement after several years of esteemed service. Very.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, yes, I would like to hear what staff would have to say about that. I'm not sure, I'm very willing to look at if there are administration, administrative personnel that can be eliminated or reduced at the district level, but I'm not sure that that's the right position for it. So I would like to hear some staff discussion.
Well, we brought you a report a couple of months ago about district office staffing. Our district office ratio compared to the number of students we have is just about half of the district office ratios across the state of California. We saw severe cuts to district office staffing a number of years ago. A lot of things have been left undone. We're just now recovering in board policies, for example. A lot of our board policies are from the late 70s or early 80s. You see policies tonight that were not updated since, since the 70s and 80s. I frankly don't see how we could operate without someone in this position. I think we've made some good progress at the secondary level, and I think we need to sustain that leadership among our, our secondary principals and be able to deal with the issues in the, in the secondary district effectively. And I think the only way we can do that is through someone in a position like this.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of, of leaving vacant the assistant superintendent, assistant superintendent for secondary education when upon Mr. Zettel's retirement? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. So it's one, four, and it is defeated. Okay. Next item, Dr. Noel.
The ca, I want, I need to understand this better first, so I guess I need to ask for some information. The, the cafeteria fund. Mr. Zerati raised a question that I just hadn't quite thought of it that way. If that is, there's $500,000 worth of debt, do I understand that correctly, correctly, Mr. Wolf?
That's what you've been told, yes, sir.
Okay. So is that carried, like, forget my amateur accounting?
Well, did you catch his answer? That's what you've been told.
You, you.
I think, I think I should give an explanation.
Well, I'm sorry. I'll give you the explanation. Let me, let me explain something that's not probably been explained to the board before who's not aware of the board. The state of California provides unrestricted money to the school districts for meals for needy. It's a per, per meal rate for the free and reduced lunch children that eat breakfast and lunch within the district. The elementary school district's a little bit less than the high school district because I guess the high school district kids eat more or something. That amounts to about $230,000, $240,000 of unrestricted money that comes into the school districts specifically for meals for needy that's never been given to the cafeteria fund. It's been, it's stayed in the general funds of both districts. It's about $34,000, $35,000 in the elementary and, and the difference is over in the high school district. In addition to that, in the cafeteria fund, the cafeteria fund picks up 20% of every school site custodian, even though, I don't know that we've done a study to find out if they spend 20% of their time in the cafeterias, cleaning the cafeterias. And so overall, over the last three years, there's been about $460,000 to $470,000, $500,000 that has been paid for by the cafeteria fund that, well, that's either been paid for by the cafeteria fund or that the cafeteria fund hasn't received. I guess you look at it two ways how you want to look at that. The cost of the cafeteria or the, the custodians, this year is about $177,000. Last year it was about 165, the year before was about 150. So there, when we, when we say the cafeteria fund's sort of encroaching, we're not giving them the revenue that they should be getting, and they're paying for an expense that may be more than what they really deserve to pay.
Well, I, I, I think I understand what you said, and I'm, I have to wonder why we are doing that, but, but.
And we have a board agenda item because I think it's appropriate to change and to account for appropriately that fund rather than not give the money to the cafeteria fund, hold it as a loan, and then have the cafeteria fund pay it back to us.
Well, that's where, that's where I was headed because, and I, because I think I recall reading the, the memorandum from Ms. Diamond in the county educational office.
Yes.
Which, which referred to it as $500,000 of debt, and I believe recommended that, that the district basically write it off, it's not coming. And the, the question in my mind is, in these projections, are we counting it as a receivable? And therefore, it looks like we have $500,000, which in fact, according to the county office, you know, the people who supervise us, they're saying, write it off, it's not, forget it. And I, and I really need to understand that better because that's a lot of money. If we're counting it like we're, like we're going to collect it sometime, and that's what's helping make this balance and meet our reserves, we should, we should understand that, and we should evaluate the recommendation from the county educational office to write it off.
I'll, I'll let Bob answer that, but we do have the item coming back to the board for that very reason, to have that discussion with the board.
But tonight's tonight, Dr. Sarvis. Tonight's the rubber hitting the road.
Well, whether we put that money, for instance, school, or meals for needy in the general fund and then charge it off as a debt, or whether we give it to the cafeteria fund and have, have less debt, the bottom line has not changed. And it was because of this, this discussion with the county that, that we thought we had better bring that back to the board and, and talk about the most appropriate way to account for that. Bob?
I'm about 95% sure that the, that that loan is not included in any of these projections as either revenue or as an expense. Because of the county comments, I think we've eliminated that already, but from the, from the recording, from the record.
So now in your next reporting, how does that get reported as a county?
That will get reported in the county with the second interim report that we removed.
Which has already been submitted, right?
No, sir. It hasn't been submitted yet. You saw a draft copy on April the 10th.
That's part of what we're doing.
That's correct, sir.
Waiting for tonight. That's right.
Okay. I've always been concerned that for a number of years now, the district had, has had under any other name a public relations office. And, and while I hold the occupant of that office in the highest esteem, I have to ask myself whether that is more important than junior high school electives or this elementary music program. Now, I anticipate part of the response being that this position does a great deal more than that. And I understand that. I also know, longtime student of Parkinson's law, that the amount of work needed expands to fill the space available, something like that. And, and therefore, I'm, I would like to, to, oh, and I also understand, or I would ask you, Dr. Sarvis, if, whether you have plans to, to change that position in any way and, and, and maybe, you know, whether it will be reduced or increased or what. And all that's predicate for what I would like, Madam President, to make a motion to eliminate that office.
Why don't we, why don't you make, you've made the motion. Is there a second? And then we'll have Dr. Sarvis.
I'll second it.
Okay. Dr. Sarvis, do you want to?
Well, this position does a good deal more than that. And my plan would be to upgrade the position, commensurate with the responsibility, responsibilities of the position. In fact, I'd be happy to go over a list of the thing, of the responsibilities that this position does carry. There are a number of other areas. If we're talking about public relations, we're also talking about our district website. We're also talking about videoing the, the board meetings. I mean, maybe there are specific parts of that that you would like to eliminate. But if you're talking about the one position, public relations is a part, but not the major part of that position. That position is currently coordinator of district projects and communications.
And is the split, is the general fund split 30/70?
I believe it is.
Between elementary and secondary? Okay. Any other board discussion?
Well, Dr. Noel, when you propose these things, I mean, one of the things that I think we could also be looking at is simply reduction in hours rather than eliminating positions. But I.
I'm sorry, Ms. Parker, yeah.
Sorry. I'm just not close enough to it tonight. But I, I just, I feel like I would need more analysis about whether it's possible to reduce some of these positions, or look at the district office and see if there's some that could be cut from full-time to 75% time, for example. And I just don't feel like I could possibly get enough information tonight on that. And I certainly have some suggestions myself for things to look at, but, you know, we do need to make some decisions tonight, so I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Well, I share your sentiment entirely, Ms. Parker. I would like to hear more analysis and really a thorough review of administrative, central office administrative positions, but, but I guess I've, I feel confronted by the impending destruction of the elementary music program and, and reduction, a very substantial reduction in the junior high school elective program, and I guess it, it does not allow much nuance in the kind of motions that one can put forward at this time.
No, I think we appreciate that, Dr. Noel. So we have a motion on the floor. Are people ready for a vote on that? All those in favor of reduction of?
I, I believe it's coordinators, special projects and communications.
Thank you.
Is that right?
Yes.
All those in favor of the elimination of that position signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So it is a no vote on that for one. Oh, I had another question for Ms. Sowoski, I'm looking at the elementary music. There's, the total of the grant is $72,000, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
For one year.
Correct. Plus, there would be $50,000 from SBEF. Yes?
Yes.
Presumably, it's in their minutes, yes.
Okay.
And that's not reflected here?
No, I understand, because we didn't reflect donations, but all of the $72,000 could be allocated to a music program.
That's correct. As long as it's not supplanting something that's in place. So in the, in the elementary music program right now, we have three full-time FTEs. We have two tenured positions, and we have one temporary that has the relief, the, the letter's already been out. So it's our interpretation that we could use this funding to hire back the third teacher because it would not be considered supplanting because this person is not a full-time teacher.
What if the program were reformulated in some way?
We, we're open, I mean, to anything to save the program, to save the elementary music program, if there's a way to restructure it, you know, just we, we want to retain it in any way we can.
Okay, I just wanted to get as much clarification as I could, Ms. Parker.
Because in, in that, if there's some funding available, it would be interesting to look at things like, can we just at least do it for sixth graders, things like that? I'm a little confused with what you're saying because it almost sounds like you could only hire that temporary teacher back.
That's correct.
Hire.
At this point. Our two teachers that are teaching are, have not received notice. They have seniority in the district, so.
They would go back into a classroom?
It, that's not clear, they're, they're music teachers, so, you know, I, I don't know how you'd play it out exactly, I don't have the list in front of me. Presumably, there may be temporary teachers in the secondary district that are music teachers where those teachers would take the place of them.
But, not, I'm thinking out loud, I mean, I realize it's not a question of clarification, we need to make these votes tonight in order to meet the demands of the second interim report, but it does not preclude looking for other budget cuts before we finalize our budget on June 30th in order to salvage certain priorities, including elementary music.
Well, we had had discussion with the county about our interim report, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but we told the county that it was the board's plan to make, make a certain number of cuts tonight, that's two and a half million dollars in cuts, which removes some $560,000 of items off this list or, or other items. And the county is fully expecting us to make at least those cuts tonight.
But the budget is a living document, we can.
Oh, yes. And every time you see it, it, yes.
Well, that was going to be my question to clarify the, the answer to the question that I perceived Mrs. Harder to be asking, and that is, between the second interim and our final adoption in June, how, how much can we alter, I mean, if, if, as we looked at it, if we came up with other options, or we, or we found other things that we'd prefer to reduce rather than the, the items that we vote on tonight, how much flexibility do we have to make those adjustments at that time?
I guess, here, I think there's a confusion here. The second interim is this year's budget. After the approval of the second interim and these cuts, we won't see this again until we see the year-end budget, which will come mid-September, as I recall, is the due date on, maybe August. The budget that we're approving in June is next year's budget, and of course, that's predicated upon the starting point, which is the second interim report and the budget cuts. So this June's adoption of the new year's budget for next year also relies on these cuts.
That, that would be correct. In order, in order to make the multi-year projection with, with the SBTA agreement, you, you do need to make the cuts that you see. Once that report goes to the state and we're doing the budget process for '07, '08, and let's just say that you happen to cut the, all of the elective courses for the junior high school, $600,000. If you come up with a foundation grant from Hewlett or somebody else for $700,000 for after-school electives, so you bring those back and, you know, the, I mean, you've made the cuts out of the unrestricted general fund, and now they're being paid for by another source of funding, so you don't really have the problem, it's in and out. So it'd be a dollar for dollar, you certainly have that, you're not, I mean, I guess I shouldn't say that you're necessarily held, if new revenue sources come available to the board to make a decision to pay for some of these things that you're cutting tonight, you can certainly make that decision as long as it's not out of the unrestricted general fund.
So once we make the decision, I'm sorry, Ms. Harder? Okay. Once we make the decision tonight to cut something, then we're, we are bound to cut it from the general fund?
The unrestricted general fund.
The unrestricted general fund. So if we were on fu- on further analysis to determine that there was a position or something else that we thought we could eliminate more palatably, we would not be free to substitute one for the other?
Well, you, yes, you could do, you need to come down to a certain level, and let's just, let's just say that level's $3 million, just for my peanut brain. If, if you've made all those cuts for $3 million, and one of those cuts was a, an English teacher for $50,000, and all of a sudden, the music teacher that you thought we were going to have that also costs $50,000, that was being paid for out of the unrestricted general fund quit, decided he didn't want to do it, couldn't get enough kids to sign up, now you have $50,000 available that you can make a decision as to what you want to do. You can put it into the unrestricted fund balance for future action, or you could replace that particular individual.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, I have one more on my, on my list.
Absolutely, Dr. Noel.
The last one is, with all due respect to my colleagues, I think as a, as a gesture, if nothing else, to our esteemed teachers and, and to, to the people who ultimately pay the bill, I'd like to move that all forms of board remuneration be eliminated for, for two years.
Let's talk about that because I have no problem with eliminating salary, it amounts to a grand total of $12,000 a year.
It's a motion.
I think, thank you, Dr. Noel.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead, discussion. We have a motion, we have a second, now we can have discussion.
And.
That's you.
I know, actually, Ms. Parker, go ahead.
If you would like me to go, it, I, I'm also very willing to talk about the salary part. I'm not using the health benefits, but I know that some of my colleagues are, and that that could be very.
I am.
Difficult to replace, especially suddenly. I, I wish that we made more than $400 a month so that we could really cut something. It's, it's not a lot, it actually comes to 24,000.
Thank you, I doubled it, I'm not, yeah.
A year.
Thinking for meeting.
But.
But that's.
It helps.
24,000 for the entire board.
And how much are the health benefits? I, I honestly don't know the number, I don't take them myself.
Dr. Robertson? For an individual?
She's looking at me because she's going to, she's going to pass it off to me. The dis- the board, or the district currently donates about $6,670 a year for each certificated individual, and a little bit less for this classified because of the way the structure is.
Is that an answer, Mr. Wolf? We're not certificated.
We're counted as certificated.
Well, that's the figure, unfortunately, that's the figure I have right off the top of my head, I know that figure, the classified workers is less than the 6,679.
But most of us don't take the health benefits.
That's correct.
That's correct.
There's only, I think, a couple that do.
Let's be precise, it's me. For members of the public, I suspect that was.
Madam President, I did not know that.
That's okay, it's okay. It would take me some time, Dr. Noel, to find replacement coverage, but I'm willing to conduct that investigation. So I, I'm happy to put board salary on tonight, would you allow me the time to investigate alternative insurance coverage?
When does all this take place anyway? Next year, right?
That would be cor- that would be correct, the, well, if there was a life-changing event, I think you can get out of the health coverage plan, it is, it is through June of this year, actually through September.
September. September.
I mean, if the payments end, the payments end in June, but the coverage goes, is effective through September.
Mrs. Harder, if it were up to me entirely, I would of course make every accommodation. It's not meant in that sense at all. I'm just looking at these draconian decisions that we have to make and, and looking for every 10,000 bucks we can get over, or every 6,000 bucks we can get over.
Go ahead, Ms. Cordaro.
Well, we've had this conversation before, and I've raised the same objections to it, I've been making these arguments for, I don't know, probably 20 years or more, usually at the city council level, and I was part of the, the committee that worked to raise the salaries of the city council. I am always concerned that, of who is able to run for public office and who is not able to run for public office, who can afford to serve and who cannot afford to serve, and I really, I don't support really any motion that would result in restricting even further the members of our community who would be able to serve on this board.
Well, I suppose it's possible to put a time limit on it so that it would be up to the next round of elections. That would be the only suggestion I could throw out there.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand you.
That if we're making this decision, that we make it for a finite period of time so that it doesn't.
I said two years.
Two years.
Does that not coincide with?
It's a little bit, it would be longer.
And, and I, I would.
Up to the next election.
Up to the next election.
May I change my, my motion to that?
Certainly, and will the second allow that change? Oh, okay.
Did you already amend it so that it's?
Meaning November, or?
November.
October, when it starts? The campaign?
No, no, not, no.
And actually, probably until, I mean, the, the new board member wouldn't come in until December.
Mid-December, right.
First week of December, yeah, okay. May, may my motion be changed to that effect?
Can I say? If Ms. Parker agrees.
Yes, Ms.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, Ms. Parker agrees?
I would vote against it because personally, I need the money, I'll say it. I have two kids in college, and it's tough enough, and I would like to have that kind of thing, I mean, it's not very much, but I need the income, so I'll say it.
I need to comment on this as well. These cuts that we're making tonight need to be permanently removed from the budget.
Which I think, you know, sort of makes moot whether we put a time limit on it or not, because, and, and also, it doesn't do anything to assuage my concern about who can afford to run, because if in the future, it was, it would require a majority of the board to reinstate the, the salary for the, for the board members, that would require a majority of board members to be in a position to vote yes, which I don't, I'm not always sure that we, I'm not confident that a person of meager means who wanted to run for the board would be able to count on having that majority. So it would still have the effect, I think, of keeping people from running.
If I may reply, Mrs. Cordaro, $400 a month does not add up to a successful campaign budget. The cost of getting, of, of being elected to the board, especially if you don't have support from the teachers' union, are formidable. And that, I believe, is the main deterrent, plus the, plus the fact that they see how much time it takes and how many, how many meetings it takes.
Well, I think that, I think your argument is a good one, I, I mean, I think we already have enough obstacles, I certainly don't want to add more to it.
I, I do see it as an obstacle, I just don't see it as the most, I agree with Dr. Noel that it's really the cost of running the campaign and then the time involved, because frankly, $400 doesn't cover very much anyway. I would be willing to look at reducing our salary back to the $200 level and look at that as a permanent solution, just as a step, because I do feel like we are making draconian cuts, and it doesn't, it, it doesn't solve anything here, but I'm hoping that there are some smaller steps that can add up to saving at least perhaps something like junior high after-school sports. So. I don't know, Dr. Noel, if.
Well, there are items on here for less than, here's a $15,000 item, a 20, and what's, 400 a month times five people for a year?
That's 24,000, but it can't, it has to be permanent, Dr. Noel.
I'll, I'll, I'll change my motion, make it permanent.
Make it permanent, well. I'd like to amend the motion if possible.
Why don't we vote up or down on the motion that's on the table?
Okay.
And then people can make new motions if they wish. So, Dr. Noel.
Call the question.
Thank you. Will you restate your motion?
That we eliminate all forms of remuneration for board members.
Permanently?
That was a period.
Okay, okay. Thank you, and. No, it does not.
I'll second it. No, that was the actual original one, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
It was originally two years, and it was until next.
Oh, okay, all right, I'll second the amended motion. Wherever we're at with it.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
So it fails 3-2.
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
That we reduce board salary to $200 a month, salary only, and that's it, permanently.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. I'll second your motion.
I don't understand about the insurance.
Leaving the insurance as is, reducing salary only to $200 a month.
Second.
Well, I would reinstate my, my original objections, and I would point out that with reducing it, the cost that, the, the savings to the district would be so minimal that it would, I think, really not warrant the effect it would, that the effect that it might have on people running for office. And I want to point out that when people have a, a middle-class income, $400 a month is not really all that much, and most of us could easily do without it. But when people have a very modest income, if they are going to be spending so much time away from other places that they might also be earning money, they. So, I think for, for people of very modest income, they wouldn't necessarily poo-poo for $400 a month.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Parker on the table, with a second by Dr. Noel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so it's 3-2, and...
What was the result?
That the board will take, their salary will be halved.
What was the vote, the number?
3-2.
3-2, all right, thank you.
Okay. So...
Can I go back for a second?
Yes.
I know this is unpleasant to go back, but I, I was hoping, I guess, when we started to cha, to not do the math class size reduction, and I was actually hoping that we would do the after-school and the music program, I realize we already did that, but I, unless there, is there anyone who would second a motion to go back and rethink that?
Move to reconsider, right?
Okay, move to reconsider.
Is there a second to move, to go back and reconsider class size reduction for mathematics in ninth grade?
I'll second it, just for some discussion.
Okay, so a motion to reconsider by Ms. Malkoff, a second by Ms. Parker.
Would, what it would give would be the 60,000 for the after sport, after-school sports, and then 38,000 left over for the music program. Is 38,000 worth, is, does that do anything for this program?
You're talking about moving funds, then, from secondary to elementary, is part of the issue for me, but apart from that, I would like to get back to the focus on the mathematics. Part of my motivation for voting for that was that I think that our high-stakes testing puts a lot of pressure on acquiring algebra skills.
Well, we can't, they can't graduate without those algebra skills, so it's...
So that was what I had on my mind when I voted for it originally.
They're all trade-offs, it's, it's hard.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, and I think people appreciate trying to think about things in new ways. Any other discussion? Then the question is, shall we reconsider our previous vote on ninth-grade class size reduction in mathematics? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, okay.
Is that 1-4?
Yes. Oh, and I suppose I should restate it, Ms. Malkoff voted yes, and the remaining board members voted no. Okay, so here we are, I don't know what the exact figure is, about $332,000 now.
How about a break?
Yes, or shall we just persevere for a few minutes?
Can't we just finish this item up?
Shall we, somebody make a motion, then?
No, I'm not gonna make a motion, but, but soon.
Okay, okay, yes.
Well, well, I'm not sure where we are in terms of our discussion of...
Right now, where we're at is 300 and, about $332,000, and putting it all, all those eggs in the basket of junior high electives.
But we don't have a motion to that effect, at this point?
No, we're just discussing.
No, okay, so, I'm, I'm, I want to reiterate my...
The 72 wasn't in there.
I'm sorry?
For some reason, when Mr. Diaz did this form, he, he didn't include this number into this number, so your balance, that you have discretion over, is this?
398?
I can't read that.
398.
Well, I think that they were sort of in either...
398?
Yes. Yes, 398.
But, that would be actually a mistake to, I think, include it in the total, because it really is a grant for elementary arts and music, so it would not, that $72,000 wouldn't be at our discretion, for instance, for junior high electives.
You're right, that is, that is correct, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Gotta get pots of money straight.
Mrs. Harder?
Yes, yes.
One of the things that I would think that we need to think about is the number of kids that are affected by these programs, and how many, how many children are doing, are taking advantage of the elementary music program right now? How many are taking electives at the junior high school? How many are taking part in the after-school sports program? Where are we gonna get the most effective use of our money, in terms of spreading it across the number of students that are affected?
Yeah, I agree.
I, I suppose if we can sort of armchair quarterback this, the junior high elective program, I'm sorry, the junior high after-school sports program does not necessarily attract large numbers of students, and some of them are repeaters, so from one season to the next, they may repeat, so, I don't, I don't, Jean, can you, there's no way you can recall that total number off the top of your head?
Well, we were just talking about the elective program, and the number of students who are involved, these additional electives allow us to run smaller class sizes for those electives, so, for instance, at Santa Barbara Junior High, where we have jazz band and a number of other instrumental music electives, where we have additional French classes, Latin classes, we can run those at much smaller ratios for these electives, so it's probably under 2,000 students altogether, who benefit from those electives.
The after-school sports program, you, you have to add in the AOK program, then, as well.
Do you remember the numbers?
Well...
1,200 students in the after-school sports program?
That's over the whole year.
Does that, and that's, so that's duplicated headcount?
Junior high only, yes.
Is that duplicated headcount? But, and does that incl, that doesn't include the, the elementary, though?
That may be duplicated headcount, that's season-by-season totals.
And you understand that our $60,000 contribution is matched by their contribution to the AOK program, to the elementary program, okay.
Would, would the number for the electives also be duplicated headcount?
It could be.
Could be, could be. We have 12 FTEs, they teach five sections each, that's 60 sections.
At a number of schools, if you're taking a foreign language, you are often accommodated with an additional elective.
Yes.
And how many students are in the elementary music program right now?
Why do we have two of our music teachers in the room? I don't, I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head.
Guys, for year-to-year, it's between 750 and 900.
Can we get, have these comments, uh...
750 to 900.
Ross, room, please.
So, yeah, it's, go, Ms. Parker, any, any comments that you want to make, now that you have some numbers in front of you?
Well, and, the one other thing that I'm thinking about also, is that, what I said before, in terms of it being sequential, in terms of the music, I think it's important that it be there for the junior high kids, but, I also agree with Mrs. Harder, it seems like our secondary, it's important to keep in mind that more of the declining enrollment has been hitting the elementary district, the cuts are, are, seem disproportionate to secondary, so I want to be careful that we keep that in mind, too, as we move forward.
Any, any thoughts from anyone?
I, actually, I have one more thing that I would like to throw out there, and this is something along Dr. Noel's lines to be thinking about for the future, and that is administrative staffing ratios for our small elementary schools, because we have some that are getting very small, in the mid-300 level, and if they're, the hours, if they're less than full-time for the principals, I think that that's something that should be considered as well, for the future, but since Dr. Noel brought those up, his suggestions up earlier, I think I'd like to throw that in there, too.
Ms. Cordaro, you?
Well, I'm just, I guess, to get the ball rolling on something, I'm gonna move that we maintain $40,000 for the junior high after-school sports.
Okay, I just have a question, can we do that?
Well, I think, I think it requires a negotiation with the city, saying, you know, this is what we have, and talking with them about whether or not they can backfill or not, and, and if not, then the money would come, come back, and the program would be eliminated, and the money would be applied to some other program.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So, we have a motion to attach $40,000 to the district support for the junior high after-school, redundancy, after-school sports program, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was three, or four? Okay, okay, thank you, and opposed?
No.
Thanks, Dr. Noel, we are 4-1, then. Okay, then, we've gotten to class size reduction, now down, the next item on the list is general fund support for seventh and eighth grade electives. About $280, $280,000, I'm sorry.
Apparently, it's 257, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Wolf.
Where are we?
You're at 3, you have 306 left.
306.
And did you subtract 40,000?
I subtracted 20,000, I thought, there's 60 on the sheet.
Thank you, thank you, yes, 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 okay, I'm...
Okay.
Sorry.
I might have fallen asleep, but I, you know, I, okay.
But didn't we have 32,000 left? I'm, 332,000 left?
326.
Oh.
You had 326 left, and yet, and 20,000 off of that.
And you can throw 12,000 back in for...
No, I think it's 40,000, because 40,000 is what we're spending.
Right, but, but, so you had 60,000 on the list, you're gonna spend 40,000, which means that...
You're cutting 20,000.
You're cutting 20. So the amount of money that you have left, that you have discretion over, is now down to 306.
I apologize, mathematically, this isn't clicking, but I'll take your word for it.
Okay.
And does that include 12,000 from the board salaries?
No, I didn't add that, I'm sorry, we should...
Okay. Shall we continue?
Except for now, I would now expect us to... I would have greater board discretion, and instead, I'm seeing less board discretion, discretion.
Right.
You know what, why don't we take a break right now? We'll come back in five or 10 minutes. Back to order, I just want to point out to members of the public, on the actual agenda itself, the handouts that were available didn't have even numbered pages, but now complete copies of agendas are out there, but seeing as how we haven't advanced on the agenda very far, and it is an odd-numbered page that we're on, I'm, I'm not sure whether too many people noticed, but there are complete copies of agendas out there. So we are continuing with item E1, mandatory budget reductions to meet 06, 07 second interim report multi-year projections. Was any board member energized enough to continue making motions, so that we can progress through this?
I'd like to look at elementary music right now.
Okay.
The 171,000 essentially is paying for two teachers, is that correct?
That's correct, with a bit of, there's repair, it's not very many, it's been reduced significantly over, even the two years I've been here.
Mm-hmm. So, for one teacher, it would be about half that amount, about 85,000, correct?
That's with benefits and all that.
Right.
Salary and benefits.
And 50,000 of that could be paid for by the Public Education Foundation?
Yes, and I did verify, in the minutes of the education foundation, there is $50,000 allocated to this program.
I would like to make a motion to keep $35,000 for the elementary music program, in order to be supplemented with the Public Education Foundation, and to be able to save one position.
Okay, discussion at this point. I, I guess, I'm, my understanding about, and I will get back to the point that is relevant, my understanding about the junior high school electives, right now, the way they're staffed, is that it's possible to offer electives with higher class sizes. Dr. Sarver's pointed out, that there are a number of programs that are cut down, so that they are relatively small, and albeit, you know, a little bit different in nature from another class that may be taught, but I'm wondering if we try and force some economy of scale there, whether or not we couldn't achieve some savings to apply elsewhere. My other question is, particularly at Santa Barbara Junior High, whether it's possible for students to take their elective language class at the high school? And I don't know if that would produce any savings.
My concern with that is that we were already really cutting the junior high elective at this point, we'd already, we'd be down to about 260, from original 660, and I'm starting, I'd be concerned at that number, that we could be cutting into core electives, core electives, it doesn't sound right, sorry, but elective programs that are popular, and things like Avid, and I, I'm just, I don't know what the exact effect would be, and so I'm concerned about cutting that even lower.
Well, let me ask you something, will there end up being some attrition there, because of the new class size caps? Will some elective classes go away, anyway? And will that impact this bottom line here?
Well, we could do a number of things here, we could set a minimum on, on these additional electives. It was one thing that was being done to attract in students who simply wanted those other electives, in a case like Latin, where we only have a few students at, in Latin 1, Latin 2, at Santa Barbara Junior High, for example, we have very small Latin classes at the high school, there is some possibility that those students could go to the high school for their Latin classes, that would help the, the economy of scale on, on both those courses. I don't know whether the same thing could be done for French, probably so. In something like, like jazz band, I would think that if you want to offer those electives, and make them attractive to the...
We could set a minimum on, on these additional electives. It was one thing that was being done to attract in students who simply wanted those other electives. In a case like Latin, where we only have a few students at, in Latin I, Latin II, at Santa Barbara Junior High, for example, we have very small Latin classes at the high school. There is some possibility that those students could go to the high school for their Latin classes. That would help the, the economy of scale on, on both those courses. I don't know whether the same thing could be done for French, probably so. In something like, like jazz band, I would think that if you want to offer those electives and make them attractive to the thirteen, seventeen students who want to take them, you probably do need to have those on, on the junior high campus. There's also the possibility here, but it's not a sure thing. There's also the possibility of, just as we would be using state instructional music block grant money for elementary, elementary music teachers, of being able to locate classes that this might apply to in the elective program. And we'd started that exploration. I don't know how far we got in that. Dr. Robertson, were you able to locate any of those classes as, as possibly applicable to this kind of funding?
Might be a few options, but I'd have to go a little more in-depth on that. Look at class sizes, look at other numbers, look at possibilities, combining. And to address what you were talking about, the electives, it is very possible for the students to take foreign language up at the high school, especially year one, possibly year two. Band might be a consideration, but they are offered different times of the day. Combining some classes, raising the numbers will possibly decrease staffing across the four schools by maybe one person. And there's still some other things that Ann and I are taking a look at, to see if there are possibilities as well.
And I have to say that concerns me, the idea, I mean, Santa Barbara Junior High and Santa Barbara High School are fairly close together, but the others are not so close together. And the idea of having our junior high students leaving campus during the middle of the day-
No, it was, it's been done in the past, and it was arranged so that it was a first-period class, that sort of thing. But it has been done in the past.
Yes.
Madam President, if I could. We did a, a study for the board, and I believe it was placed into the board brief, possibly a year ago or so. As we looked at the three additional FTEs at each junior high school, they were given back as a, kind of a gift, to alleviate the pain of the seventh-period removal. While it didn't give back all of the FTEs that a seventh-period would, you know, so it wasn't fully staffing, and it was about at a, between maybe thirty to fifty percent restaffing. We looked at where those FTEs were, and I've, I worked with the principals a little bit on, on that. And we saw that a lot of those had been used to lower class size within the regular day as they added teachers into each of the one through six courses, periods. So it wasn't exactly being used as it should have been used. Now, our junior highs, if all of these were taken away, we'll still have elective staffing for periods one through six. These are additional. We're not doing away with junior high electives. We're doing away probably with, well, if you, if you do it in total, it, it it will force class size going up to, to a level, and I think you're right, Mrs. Harder, that it will probably force some of the lesser, the, the electives that are not so popular out. You can't run those with fifteen kids if you have class size-
What about things like zero-period band? That kind of thing?
Actually, at least in, in my experience, the, the, I know it's offered at Galita Valley. I'm not sure how many other campuses it's offered on. It's a pretty heavily subscribed class.
So that would be, it would stay, it wouldn't be paid for, it's not being paid for right now by those three FTEs?
That's really hard for me to say, because they're just added into the, the regular FTEs at the school. And to, and to pick it out which ones are being paid for is difficult. I'm not sure how to do that.
Can you, Mr. Zettel, say, because I think there are a lot of people really concerned with this. Can you say this really simply? I mean, are you saying basically to the public that junior high electives are not gonna be affected by this? Did I hear you say that?
Oh, no, you didn't hear me say that.
Junior high electives are not gonna be eliminated by this?
Eliminated, they will not be eliminated by this. These are additional-
Was that a hundred percent they, or a partial they? I mean, I don't know how to understand what you're saying.
You're saying that some will be eliminated, and there'll be some saved, but we can't tell?
Yes, exactly. And I can't tell now, because I don't have a brand-new master schedule in front of me.
But I think the public would like to know which ones, I mean, you know.
It's, it, it's market forces, Dr. Noel, and I guess it's always been that way. I mean, I know Mr. Holmes has spoken to this a number of times.
So Latin loses?
It's classes that don't have high subscribe, a high number of student subscribers, yes, would, would be the losers.
Industrial tech, where, where does that come in?
I think from campus to campus, it's on a wheel or not. And, and on some campuses, it's popular, and on some campuses, it's not, it's, it's not different.
Aren't there, aren't there, at some of the junior highs, not just one music or band class, but isn't there not, are there not more than one? I, I thought I saw something at Santa Barbara Junior High about orchestra?
Yes, that's true, but there's-
Was that undersubscribed, or?
I, I don't know at this point. Every year, they're different, they're, they're run at different class sizes.
And Dr. Noel, it's made even more complicated by the fact that a music teacher may not teach five periods of music. They may teach two or three periods of music, and then teach some alternative class in order to keep that FTE on their campus. Go ahead, Ms. Parker.
May I read to you a list from John Beckio? In fact, let me read a little of the introduction. "We use our categorical money in general fund FTE allocation to offer double-period support classes for math, English, reading, High Point. In a six-period day, students enrolled in double periods of academic classes are not able to take any elective. This reduces the elective class sizes to levels that would not be sustainable without additional FTEs. Additionally, we use the FTEs to offer all these students a seven-period day, so they can take any elective course if they choose." Now, among those items, those sections listed are French I, excuse me, French I and II, Latin I and II, Latin III, IV, Spanish I, II, Journalism, Debate, Leadership, Spanish III, IV, three sections of Avid, Jazz Band, Orchestra, Stagecraft, Theater Arts, Choir. Now, if you really push John Beckio, he could find some, funding for some of those classes, and he could find general ratio support for some of those classes. But he wouldn't be able to do it for all of them.
Just, just one more clarification, Dr. Sarvas. And, and the, because I understand some junior highs add electives at the zero period and, and the seventh period. And how, again, I, how does that fit into this, these proposed cuts? Would those go?
In fact, these are primarily those that are additional electives outside of the six-period day.
The ones that, the ones that-
Zero period and seventh period, yes. Let me read further. That there are other classes, other electives, that are already within the, the general staffing ratio. Art, theater, debate, journalism, band, woodshop, and other electives. So, those are already within the staffing ratio. These, the ones that I listed were simply the over and aboves that, that he uses this additional FTE money for.
Do, am I, help me out here, I'm not sure I'm drawing the right conclusion, but if, I'm thinking, if kids are taking double periods, if they're English learners or struggling in math, they have no room for electives, except it's zero period and seventh period. So that this would, cutting that would really impact some of the most needy kids we have, or am I reading that wrong?
Yes, unless you can take care of those needs in other ways. Unless you can move some of those students to high school classes that are also low enrollment classes.
High school?
High school, yes. In the case of the foreign-
For kids who live on the west side and go to Kumbre?
I'm thinking of the foreign language classes, and there are some of those needy kids who are taking Spanish, for example.
One little twist to this, too, that's tied to another item here, is the supplemental use of EIA funding or other for supplemental. In the, where I was principal at the middle school in Carpenteria, we offered a zero period that was an additional, was a front-loading for our English learners. So you can use categorical funding to put, this was to allow those students to have that in the beginning of the day as supplemental, and to be able to take an elective. So there's ways of arranging schedules by using categorical, eliminating general fund for those kinds, and then allowing electives.
Okay. You had started to put a motion on the table, Ms. Parker-
I did, and I believe there was a second.
Second, from Ms. Malikoff. And I, your motion was thirty-five thousand dollars toward an elementary music teacher with fifty thousand dollars from SBEF, so that it would, in total, would cover one music teacher at the elementary level, correct? Yes.
Could that be stated in terms of, of the budget reductions? Which are really the subject of this whole piece of paper?
Mm-hmm. I'm gonna wait for Mr. Wolf.
So we look down here, we say we have one hundred and seventy-one, seven. Rather, I think it'd be clearer if it were stated as how, by how much is that being cut?
That, so we're now reducing the number by thirty-five thousand?
So the motion then is to reduce that one seventy-one, seven oh one by thirty-five thousand?
No, two, no, two-
One thirty-six, seven, yes.
Two thirty-five thousand. One seventy-one, seven oh one from our budget would become thirty-five thousand.
One thirty-six, seven oh one.
So there, okay, so.
But you're counting the-
I'm doing it the opposite direction.
The foundation's grant?
And, no.
I'm sorry, yes, this is, okay.
Well, well, do we mean to change this reduction from one hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred one to one hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred one?
No, what I meant to do was to cut district support from one seventy-one, seven oh one to thirty-five thousand.
Cut two?
Thirty-five thousand. One seventy-one, seven oh one pays for two teachers.
Okay.
Thank you.
But, but that still reduces the reduction to one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
No.
No.
I have the-
The district, the district will save one hundred and thirty-six, seven oh one, based on Ms. Parker's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf, yes, thank you, okay. Okay, so there's a motion on the, on the floor, and any further comment? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yike, that sucks, I'm sorry. Opposed?
No.
Thanks, Dr. Noel.
Was that four one?
Yeah, it was four one. I'm sorry. Yes? Yes, Dr. Noel voted against the motion, yeah, and everyone else voted for it. Okay.
What do we have left, Mr. Wolf?
Two sixty-three, seventy-five, over discretion.
Then I move that we, the, the remainder, which is that amount, be put toward the seventh and eighth grade electives.
Is there a second for that?
Could you put it in a way that doesn't require one to do the arithmetic?
She said the remainder.
I can't, I can't even read it.
Okay, okay.
Was that amount two, was it two sixty-three, seven oh five?
Two hundred and sixty-three thousand, seventy-five dollars.
Oh, seventy-five, not seven oh five.
Two hundred and sixty-three thousand, seventy-five. So is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Uh, thank you, discussion. No?
So, yeah, I'm sorry, something else?
No, no, no.
Well, I, I'm, yeah.
Excuse me. So, that would mean that we are voting to eliminate the district support for Secondary Gate? Right?
And Elementary Gate, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yeah, Secondary and Elementary Gate, okay. And I guess that's the only other that's on the list, right?
It would be everything else on the list, Ms. Parker.
But that's the only one that's on the list, right? That's the only one that's left on the list, right?
That would be true.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No, and that's under the understanding that by voting yes, I would be eliminating district support for elementary and secondary gate, which I would not do.
Okay. And actually, I'm, I'm looking at the amount now, I wasn't looking at it before. No, 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 'cause I, I, I actually would like to, to reconsider the vote. I'm sorry, everyone. Because I would like to make that contribution to Gate, and then put the remainder to the junior high electives, so.
So you take forty thousand from that?
Yes.
I would consider making a contribution towards Gate.
Well, let me just put it this way, I would like to reconsider that last vote. Will I get a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you. All those in favor of, of some reconsideration of that last vote signify by saying aye. Aye. That was one, two?
Abstained.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you. And did, Ms. Parker?
I was a yes.
Okay, so it's three, one, and one. Okay, so we're back. No, 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 I, I'm, I'm, Ms. Parker, you said a contribution to Gate.
I'm, I would like to hear some information from staff right now about the forty thousand, what that is paying for, and if we contributed ten or twenty thousand towards it, would it still help? Or is it just futile?
And you might add, how much do we get from the state? You ought to answer that. I don't know.
The secondary district budget contributes twenty thousand dollars out of the general fund for Secondary Gate. In addition to that revenue, we get some
Eighty-
Eighty-eight thousand dollars from the state grant. And in years past, through parent donation, we have gained in revenue between sixty and sixty-five thousand dollars per year. So by cutting twenty thousand dollars out of that budget,
Secondary represents the administrative support, correct?
Yes.
The Secondary Gate office. And at the elementary level, it represents, well, I suppose there's a component of testing in each.
Exactly.
And then also, it represents administrative support in elementary. Or is that primarily just testing support?
Testing support, because our coordinator, day and a half, is paid out of Title II, not Gate.
Okay.
So it would be some professional development, the teachers provide, they, they have minor little pieces at each site. We get thirty-nine thousand plus a few dollars from the state grant, and then the twenty thousand dollars supplements it. So we have sixty thousand dollars total.
Are the state grants premised on any local contribution?
It is a three-year grant, written that way. What I am not clear about is we, we, in the grant, in our budget, it has that amount, but I don't believe that we, I don't know for sure, but I would guess that we don't get our three-year, it's a, it's like a term of three years where it passed, you have to renew it. I don't believe that it's based on the budget with that piece. I'd have to make sure that's-
That's not my recollection either, but, okay.
So they're not matched, it's not a matching?
No, it's, it's certainly not a matching. No, it's not, does not require that. I'm just saying that that extra twenty thousand is reflected in our budget that goes to the, the state for the plan. I don't believe we- the plan. I don't believe we get our plan rejected or whatever. If that's not in there, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
And my question is that there was mention of 60,000 parental donations, gifts?
Secondary only, we don't have fundraising at the elementary yet.
But is that, that's something that is, can we count on that for the purposes of second interim report?
No.
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 Well, I'd say that's soft money. I don't think that you could absolutely count on that, no. I didn't mean that. I mean, for purpose of the secondary, of the second interim report.
For the current year, yes, but for the out-years, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And that's because it's money in hand.
That's because it's money in hand right now, yes, we do have a budget, we do have a carryover balance.
For 2007, eight, and four.
I wouldn't, yeah, unless you enter into some kind of an agreement with an organization that they're going to contribute X number of dollars to guarantee that, I wouldn't include it in the budget.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker, did you have something else you wanted to add? Do you want to make a motion with respect to gate?
I would move to eliminate 20,000 of the 40,000 and keep 20,000 divided between the elementary and secondary district for gate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Cordero.
I just want to.
Ms. Parker with a second by Ms. Malikoff.
Can I, is that also the rest being going to, are we still dealing with the seventh and eighth grade electives?
I don't know if there was a second given to that, but I mean, essentially, that's what's left, so, yes.
Do you want to include that in there?
I could do both. And then the remainder going on to seventh and eighth grade electives.
Thank you, second.
Okay, so the amended.
I move to buy for gate, please.
Okay.
There's such distinct issues there.
Great, okay. Well, maker of the motion, accept that?
Yes, I accept that.
Okay, back to the original motion. Secunder?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Cordero.
I have a question. If we, if we vote no on this, does that mean then that we retain the original motion that we've already acted on?
Just to be safe, I think I would go back.
So when we vote to reconsider, then that makes our previous motion null, is that correct?
I believe that's the case. Mr. Price?
Okay.
I thought I was referring to Ms. Parker's.
You were.
You were.
Yes, that's exactly right, we understood that, yes.
So with that, so what are we voting on now?
We will be voting on gate, but Mrs. Cordero is seeking some clarification with regard to reconsidering a vote. When you vote to reconsider, does it make it null and void?
And that's my understanding, that the vote to put the remainder towards seventh, eighth grade class size, or seventh, eighth grade electives by being reconsidered nullified that vote, and now you're on to another matter.
I think that, my understanding is quite, quite different. I thought the motion to reconsider.
Yes.
Was voted upon, and then you reconsider. Nothing's automatic, then the debate goes back to consideration.
We did vote to reconsider.
You're in the process of reconsidering it, although you bifurcated that, so the reconsideration is in two parts.
And then now, yeah, there's no new motion out there, so that instead of the rest.
One is for gate, and the other part, I assume that's still coming, is about what we do with those seventh, eighth grade electives.
Correct.
Well, actually, I beg to differ, and I'm sorry to get bogged out in parliamentary procedure, but I was under the impression that we only voted to reconsider the, the motion, and now we're voting again?
I, the motion, it was to reconsider the previous vote.
Well, I think what she's saying is that maybe we need to vote again that exact same motion.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
But let's proceed with the motion that's on the table.
But actually, that might, that motion would have to come first, because Ms. Malikoff had said all the rest is going to the junior highs. So we need to address that.
And then she agreed to the, your amendment to bifurcate it.
Okay.
So we're voting on gate right now.
Okay.
What we are allocating to gate, and gate alone.
Thank you, that's a very helpful clarification.
Okay, all those in favor of making a gate contribution of 20,000 dollars, I know I'm not seeing the line item, instead of.
Instead of 40, though.
Instead of 40, thank you. Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Was that a no?
And let me just make sure I get my position clear, because I would like to vote all of these things as voting yes or no on the, on cuts. I thought that's what we were doing. So I understand the one is the other side of the same coin, but I, in effect, want my vote recorded as voting no on cutting 20 from gate rather than leaving 20 for gate.
I think we would all like to make those kinds of clarifications on difficult votes. Thank you, Dr. Noel, I think it will be noted in the minutes. Now we are back to junior high electives, I believe. Yes?
Yes.
And is there a motion? Is there discussion?
I move remainder now, which is.
If you were to apply the remaining money, that would keep 246,000 dollars in the budget, 246, I mean, 243,075 in the budget, and that would sustain a cut then of 376?
Mm-hmm.
No, yeah.
Yes, no.
No, no, it'd go in the other direction, wouldn't it?
The three, the.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Now, is that, what, is that the motion then, to sustain the cut?
The motion is.
You know, I can make the motion anywhere I want. I want to say that it's 243,075 dollars to seventh and eighth grade.
No.
No.
Electives.
Electives.
Electives, excuse me, electives.
And the cut would be 416, 925.
Okay.
Yes.
Second?
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so it passes 4-1 with Dr. Noel voting no. And I think that that takes us to the end of our list. Yes.
Again, I'd like to explain that that no vote meant that I do not want to cut, I think in terms of cuts, I do not want that, to sustain a cut of 416,000. I think that was what Dr. Sarvis said.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Can I clarify my vote, too?
Go ahead.
That my yes vote means I didn't want to cut it either, but I felt like I had to.
Me, too.
Thank you.
I think I got it.
Okay, so much for clarifications. We are on to, have we fully concluded, Mr. Wolf? I believe in my mind we have, but I don't want to jump the gun as I have on several occasions tonight.
No, you, no, you're done.
Thank you.
May I just make a comment, though?
Of course, Dr. Sarvis.
This has been an agonizing process, and I know board members have considered these, and no one wanted to make any cuts, and none of us would in almost all these areas. But thank you, board. This does allow us to maintain our good standing with the county education office, to maintain an unqualified second interim budget report, and puts us in good stead for our three-year, multi-year funding based on our salary negotiations.
Okay. It is 10:15. Let's see how far we can get on the time that we have remaining. Item E2, adoption of resolution 0607-29, recognizing the week of May 20th to 26th, 2007 as Classified School Employee Week.
You have a corrected copy in front of you, since the two, first two whereas's are identical.
I saw that. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution. Second.
Thank you.
And honor our school, our classified employees.
All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it passes 4-0 with, I assume, at least a temporary absence perhaps. Item E3, adoption of resolution 0607-30, recognizing May 9th, 2007 as the day of the teacher.
Move to approve?
Uh, go ahead, sorry, is there, make.
Second.
Motion to approve by Ms. Cordero, second by Ms. Parker. Actually, I would just like to make a couple of corrections, and I think we can, not corrections, additions, I think we can approve with the additions, and then when I sign it, it would, it would reflect the additions. Under the, one, two, three, four, the fifth whereas and the sixth whereas, they refer, both refer to California's teachers. Under the fifth one, I would like to, like to add something that reads, whereas excellence in our community begins with our Santa Barbara teachers, our Santa Barbara School District's teachers. And under the current sixth whereas, I would like to add, whereas, it says, Santa Barbara School District teachers are among the best educated, et cetera, et cetera, so that we're adding two additional lines that mirror the preceding whereas. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So will the maker of the motion accept those corrections?
I will.
And the secunder?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving this, or adopting this resolution signify by saying aye.
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 Adoption of resolution 0607-31, recognizing May 3rd as Employee Appreciation Day.
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we have adopted three resolutions in a row, some.
In four and a half minutes.
Well, and pleasanter business than the preceding items. Item E5, approval of modification to fundraising agreement, Santa Barbara High School Theater Foundation. Mr. Hetjung?
Mr. Hetjung, yes.
Thank you. As outlined in the, in the board agenda, in December, a chair like this was sitting in front up here for you to look at, and you gave approval for the Santa Barbara High School Theater Foundation to fundraise for new theater seats for that project. We came back the next board meeting and approved an official fundraising agreement. I'm happy to report that the foundation has raised to date 94,600 dollars. As outlined in the board agenda, the foundation was hoping to get a $25,000 grant from the Hutton Foundation. The good news is they're getting a grant, the bad news is the Hutton Foundation is giving them $10,000. So the amount short would be about 33,300. They have raised 75% of the money required for the seats and the architect fees, and this is generally the gauge that we use with other fundraising groups, what we require them to have before we go through with the contract. However, their fundraising agreement calls for them to raise funds up until we award this project. So Terry Gabriel, excuse me, Terry Gabrielson and three of her other board members are here tonight, and they are requesting that the board modify the fundraising agreement to allow them more time, and I'll let them come up to the podium with any specifics that they, that they would like to propose. But I would like to remind the board that they've done an excellent job. We've, as indicated in the backup, we've opened the bids, we know exactly what the dollar amount was, it is, when before it was just an estimate. I've talked to legal counsel about the bid protest, and I plan on coming back to the board on May 8th, asking for award to the low apparent bidder waiving the specific DVBE requirement, which would mean that the dollar amount would be the 117 for the seats. So I brought this to the board tonight, so I would know exactly what to put on the board item for May 8th.
Mr. Hetjung, will you walk me through the math again? Their goal was to reach 117,000 dollars?
Plus $9,000 of architecture fees.
Thank you, okay, that was.
To date.
That was the difficulty I was having, okay.
To date, to date, they have given the district, we have, Mr. Wolf has some place.
94,000.
He has 84,600. The 10,000 from the Hutton Foundation, they've notified that they're going to receive it, but the district hasn't received it, so I would include that as amount raised towards the 75% goal.
The total being, again?
Pardon?
The total being?
The total that they have raised, committed in the bank to the district to date is 94,600 dollars. They may have a little bit more in their bank account that they've raised since, I've gotten the last check, I don't know. See, it's coming in as we speak.
Mr. Hetjung, at the end of the legal advice, it suggests that you reject all bids and rebid the project without the requirements?
I don't think that would be in the best interest of the district. To reject the bids and rebid the project is going to severely affect the timeline for construction of a majority of this project during the summer, and adversely affect what happens at Santa Barbara High School and that theater during the school year. Both these contractors are outstanding contractors. They've done work for the district, they do good work for the district, they both understand the position the district's in, and I believe that we're within our right, and we would be, I don't believe there'll be a formal legal action taken, is my belief and my recommendation to the board. However, I can't promise that. I can tell you that they're good contractors, they understand our position, they both would like to have the job, I think it's in the best interest of the board in light of the difference in the dollar amount, and in light of the requirements, that it's not truly required, although we always encourage our bidders to get disabled veteran subcontractors. I don't believe there would be any legal recourse by a contractor against the district, I think, which, you know.
But that part of the issue would come up again.
There's always a risk, no matter what you do, that someone's going to file some legal action.
But we're going to come up against that issue again when we see the actual contract, and.
Well, the option would be on May 8th, when I bring it before you, you have the option to reject all bids and not award a contract.
Thank you, that's fine.
I will only make a recommendation, you make the decisions.
Okay, I don't know if.
Terry, would you like to speak?
I would like to.
And then maybe you can introduce your board members that are here with you also.
I'm Terry Gabrielson.
Why don't we, why don't you come up to the mic, Ms. Gabrielson, and I want to thank you and your board members for sitting through a rather long.
I'll answer those questions.
Discussion and waiting a long time for your item.
They're now, but.
Thank you, David. I am Terry Gabrielson, I'm the president of the foundation, and I'm not the only one on the foundation. Our board members, there's five of us, and Bob Zivan couldn't make it this evening. He's got, he's an attorney, and he had some deposition of some sort tonight. Can you introduce yourselves? Stand up.
Hi, my name is Patty Boucher.
Sorry, my name is Patty Boucher, and I am a parent of two high school students, alumni of Santa Barbara High, and I work at Santa Barbara Bank and Trust.
Thank you. I'm Glory Cavallaro, I'm also an alum of Santa Barbara High, and I have a daughter at Santa Barbara High, and I teach at La Colina.
Hello, I'm Gillian Richardson, I'm the secretary treasurer of the foundation. I have a daughter who spent four years in the theater at the high school, she is now majoring in theater and psychology at UC Santa Cruz. I have a daughter who's in eighth grade at Santa Barbara Junior High, who will be coming to the high school and hopefully being in the theater there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that I'd like to, we're here, of course, to ask for an extension because we, our contract of December 13, 2005, we made the agreement that we would indeed have the full funds. As David explained, we actually have a little bit more than what he said, because every day we're still getting more. We've got, besides Hutton, we've got some prospective foundations that are currently, that are in the works right now. Now that Hutton's come through, it's most likely that several others will come through as well. We mistakenly, and the reason we are somewhat behind here, is we mistakenly fundraised to a hard money cost based on a manufacturer and installer's bid. And then when, since the bids have come in, there was an additional 18,500 added to it based on whatever the contractor's markup or what. five hundred dollars added to it based on whatever the contractors markup or whatever it's called. And I know David has tried to explain it and Paul Turnbull has tried to explain it to me and I'm kind of wrapping my arms around it. We are more than willing to continue to fundraise so that we have that additional amount. Since the seating company, um, well, it's, that's, that's unnecessary to discuss at this juncture unless you have a question about it. We are requesting an extension to raise this fundraising amount and if possible, we'd like to have the date of December thirty-first, two thousand and seven. This would be after completion of the project we're aware of, but the reason being we'd have new parents, prospective parents that are coming in for the new year, two thousand and seven, eight, as well as our prospective fundraisers or foundations that we hope to kick in. We also are planning another event that we did last year that brought in some thirteen thousand. So it's, it's very, we've done this once, we're going to do it again. We'll invite all the people who have already donated and believe me, these seats, we haven't, we've, we've sold some rows, but most of this money has come and we now, if I may say a figure, may I? A hundred and three thousand dollars in, to date. But most of this has been individual chairs, which is kind of cool. Other than Hutton, which was a ten thousand dollar, we have really gotten a little bit here, a little bit there. And it's up in a year and a half. So we're really very excited and very thankful for your support.
How much is a, a chair?
Two hundred. Would you like to buy one?
No, we just each gave up two hundred dollars a month.
I know.
President Harder, if I may expand on what Terry has said, the foundation in all good faith went out and contacted a reputable seating manufacturer and asked them to give a quote of what it would cost to furnish and install these seats and, and that manufacturer gave them that quote. However, come bid time from a contractor, we have no way of knowing for sure what quote that seat manufacturer gave that contractor. In addition, that contractor has undoubtedly taken that number and added on an additional amount for profit, overhead, insurance, bonds, mobilization, supervision, and other things. And so consequently, when we opened the bids and the figure of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the seats was given to the foundation, of course, they said, what happened? And then we went back and figured out what happened. And that's why they were raising to a, a number and, and got caught short based on what they thought was, was going to be an accurate number that, that we'd come through on a contract alternate.
I have one more financial question for you, Mr. Hettink, and that is, if we grant the extension, will the, will the price of the seats go up incrementally between now and December?
No, it will not. The, the, the project was bid with, with three alternates and that price that the al, that the contractor gave for, for an alternate is good for sixty days. And if you award a contract, then that price is locked in.
Thank you. Questions from Ms. Gabrielson or from Mr. Hettink?
So if we go ahead and approve this extension, um, this, the bid will be accepted, assuming we accept the bid on May eighth, we could go, just go forward with construction, installation of these seats and we will then be sort of paid back? Is that the idea?
Correct.
Ms. Cordaro?
Um, and is the amount, because it seemed like on the, on the, sorry, on the agenda it says that we're uncovering forty-three thousand, three hundred?
It would be, it would be less than that because that did not include the, I imagine that by the time we have contract award and notice to proceed, that we would have the ten thousand from the Hutton. So it would be at a minimum ten thousand dollars less than that, plus the amount they fundraised since I wrote the agenda item.
Well, if they, if they are up to a hundred and three thousand, is that what you said?
Yeah, I'd like Gillian, our treasurer, to come up here because I'm not real good with numbers.
And the, and you, and the amount that was identified was something like a hundred and seventeen thousand?
One twenty-six.
Hi.
One hundred and twenty-six.
Oh, plus nine, one twenty-six.
So they're over eighty percent.
So they're about twenty thousand away? Is that correct?
Where, where, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, at this point, we have, and I literally, as of yesterday, received almost three thousand dollars in checks. So with, probably next week, I can deliver to David a check for another twelve thousand dollars. So basically, right now, on paper, what we will owe you is twenty-nine thousand, one hundred. David needs to get the other twelve thousand, six hundred from us, but he will probably get that sometime next week. That's a guaranteed. I literally have checks on my desk and a letter saying that, and the ten thousand dollar check from Hutton is coming. So that said, we need to raise a balance of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred by December thirty-first, which should not be a problem whatsoever. I literally have two grants outstanding, one to Rotary Club for five thousand, another one to Rotary Sunrise for another five thousand. And I also have an application into the Santianas Band of Tumash Indians for ten and another one to another foundation. But some of these come through mid-May and then another few are going to be coming through in September. So this is why we're requesting the extension to December thirty-first, just to give us that, that breathing time.
Thank you. Any further questions or someone prepared to make a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the extension to December thirty-first of two thousand and seven.
Second.
All those, any further discussion?
I would simply like to say that, uh, my recollection is that we have a seventy-five percent cutoffs and that you say it, Mr. Hettink?
It's been, seventy-five, uh, having seventy-five percent of the money by contract award is what the board in the past has required of other organizations.
Yes, it is.
It's the board policy, yeah. And I, I think eighty percent sure beats seventy-five, it's a good job.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
So it passes unanimously, an extension until December thirty-first. Good. We look forward to seeing you then. Item E6 and, uh, board members, what I would like to do is take this item, deal with our pulled items from the consent agenda and then conclude the meeting. So item E6 is approval of Mandarin Chinese course outlines for grades seven, nine, and dual enrollment. Dr. Chavez?
Jan Zettel, our assistant superintendent for secondary education will give the report.
Ni hao. I'd like, it may be a little late to do that, but I don't know how to say good morning or good night, I don't know. I'd like to welcome Su Fen Yan here. She is a Chinese teacher and is a, an employee of the district, also has just been certificated to teach. And so she is the lady that's kind of been partnering with us and, and working on Mandarin Chinese as a, a course. Teaching Mandarin Chinese as one of the core languages is certainly growing in K-12 education across the country for many, many reasons. China is emerging globally as an economic and political giant. I think I, I read something the other day that there were more Chinese in China that speak English than there are people in America that speak English. And so you can see the, proportionately, it's just amazing. The course outlines that are being presented to you tonight are outlines that Su Fen and others from UCSB and Santa Barbara City College have worked on to put together along with the materials that would be used to, to begin a Mandarin Chinese course. The hope of this is that it would be a course, course sequence that would lead to AP Mandarin Chinese. We had the conversation with the college board when we were at the National Avid Conference and they, while they don't have it quite done yet, will have it very shortly in the future, an AP Mandarin Chinese course. And so we're, we're very anxious about that and seeing that. So the five-year plan is to offer Mandarin Chinese in grade seven, twelve as a four or five-year sequence ending in the newly developed course, AP Mandarin Chinese. These courses are recommended for the non-native speaker, as you could hear the non-native part of the speaking. And I've learned a lot about the tonal part of Chinese and I, uh, Su Fen has just got me really curious about this language, so. She's really good at it, as I'm not. Because finding teachers is very difficult, we're trying to determine how we'll pilot the courses. We'll probably look at one or two interested high schools or junior highs, actually, because we do have a course outline for seventh grade Mandarin. The course will be taught within the, the school's allotment of FTEs and as any other elective course, it's going to be based on student interest and enrollment. The cost will be nothing more than additional funding beyond the normal text and materials cost. And if the courses are taught as a regular course in grade seven or in grade nine, that funding will come from our instructional materials fund, approximately five hundred dollars per course. We are also thinking about offering the course, which would be actually in addition to the FTEs as dual enrollment. We've spoken to Carol Flores about that, we're kind of working out some of the details of that and, and hopefully that will also be possible. So what we're ask, what I'm asking for tonight is, is that you approve the course outline so that we can begin the process of moving Mandarin Chinese into our language, foreign language offerings. Questions?
So just to be clear, we are approving course outlines this evening?
Only, yes.
Thank you. Board comments or discussion?
I would just like to say that I'm thrilled that the district is moving to add this sort of option for our students. I think that it's long past due. And I'm particularly thrilled at the, several members of the East Asian Studies Department at UCSB who brought this to our attention and have really, I mean, we, I, I know that we could not have progressed without their guidance and their help, so...
That's right.
It's, it's wonderful that it's going to be a possibility, so. With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Um...
We can have further discussion, but I would like to make a motion that we approve the Mandarin Chinese course outlines for grades seven, nine, and dual enrollment.
Okay. Ms. Malikoff?
I went to Santa Barbara High School today and I was kind of approached by many of the foreign language teachers. And they're concerned because of the class size increases and so forth, that it's affecting them quite a bit, especially in terms of German and some of the, uh, the languages, Latin perhaps, where, where there aren't that many students in some of these classes. And their, their concern is that, that for a high school requirement, students need four years. And if in the middle we start not, you know, because of class size and so forth, we eliminate some of these, this means we have students who are kind of in the middle, who are, have maybe had two years and don't have the whole thing. And they were asking for some phase in, that this all, and I, it sounded like there needs to be some coordination between junior high and high school and, and all those kinds of, of issues. I mean, Mandarin sounds wonderful in our schools, I'm just concerned about all the impact. They also mentioned something about Arabic, which I had no idea that we have that being taught in our classes. I didn't realize that. Um, I don't know, maybe you'd like to address some of that?
I've had conversations only with one of the high school principals and that was Mr. Turnbull at Santa Barbara High. And he shared the concern about the German class, but we're very hopeful that that, that, well, we know that that course is offered at Santa Barbara City College, that our students can pick up the extra, the third class if they need that there. These, you know, it's, um, this is part of the, you just went through this, the tough part of looking at cuts. And I think now with changes in the world and, and, you know, we need to adapt to that. We need to let the students make choices with their electives, they are electives. And it, it will be market-driven, which is why I'm asking for the course approval, course outlines to be approved and that's all. Now, we can certainly look at, as we add a year, ninth grade, a tenth grade, you know, we may be phasing out other languages as that proceeds forward. It's not going to be all at once that we'll push a whole language out. This will be a phased program and, and each of the principals that choose to do this or the students at those schools that choose this language, they're the ones that will be really affecting the course schedules.
Yes, Dr. Wallen, then Ms. Cordaro.
Yeah. I, I hardly endorse the idea of teaching Mandarin Chinese in our schools and have for a long time. And I guess I'm, I have one with a very, just a textual question here, Doc, Mr. Zettel. The FTE cost will be supplemented with funding from Santa Barbara City College, you mean they're actually going to give us money or, that, that's just not clear, or is that a...
They supply the teacher. They supply the teacher in dual enrollment, yes. And then they also give us additional funds for materials.
Yeah. My next question is, goes to some of the things that Mrs. Malikoff said. You say it's going to be market-driven. I have a hard time picturing twenty fifteen, twenty kids enrolling in Mandarin Chinese, maybe at DP, but I have a hard time seeing it downtown. And, and my thought is that this should be sheltered in some way. Now, is, would that be, I mean, how, how do we, how do we enforce higher enrollments on the one hand and on the other hand introduce a new course that is almost certainly not going to have that, a, a, a large enrollment at the outset?
Well, I, I, I think it's okay to start...
Ms. Parker, I'm sorry, Ms. Cordaro was next.
Um, I, I actually have some concerns about the, the enrollment, but I kind of agree that the, uh, sort of, um, some demand will, will drive whether or not the course gets offered, whether it becomes part of the, the, uh, it's like, God, I'm going, I'm brain dead. The schedule, the master schedule, et cetera. I actually was more interested in the course proposal itself because I feel like in, in looking at this proposal, it's hard to know really what's being taught, because unless you know, unless you're familiar with what these things are, you don't really know what the, what the curriculum is or what the objectives of the, of the course are, what the out, the student outcomes are expected to be, what kind of requirements there will be for the course, et cetera. So I was just wondering, I guess I was a little concerned that is, is this the typical kind of course outline that we would normally approve?
There is no typical course outline from what I've seen. I don't have a syllabus for these courses from the teacher as yet. These are primarily driven from the text that they will be using to teach the course. And it is, um, as I look at each of these things, when you begin a language, especially a tonal language, that's going to be really basically what you'll be doing a lot of, is listening to the tone changes, learning some of the, you know, cultural aspects of Chinese because that, the language is wrapped in that.
I, and I...
I didn't question this too much because I didn't have a lot of knowledge about it.
Well, that's my concern, is I think, I mean, I love the idea of bringing the course and especially if there's enough students who want to take it. I'm just a little concerned as a board member that we're approving a course outline, but I don't feel like I really know what's in the course, to know whether it's an appropriate course outline or, I, you know, so I, we, I mean, I just feel a little...
No, I, I asked, I'm sorry, Mrs. Harder.
No, I think, I think Ms. Parker has some comments to offer with regard to this part of the discussion.
I'm, I'm just curious if you're looking for things like during first year Chinese, they will learn present tense and six hundred characters and that kind of thing.
That's a lot of characters.
Or what, I, you know, it's exaggeration there, but I'm... Or, you know, it's exaggeration there, but I'm, are you just looking for more detail of that kind of, like the grammar aspect of it?
Yeah, and I may be, I may be coming more from a higher ed perspective on what a course outline is, but I always think of a course outline as having the objectives for the course, the requirements of the course, the student, the student outcomes, student learning outcomes. And so this isn't, I mean, this to me looks more like an assignment schedule, or a sort of a lesson schedule, and maybe that's how we approve courses, but I didn't recall seeing an outline like this before for a course proposal.
In discussions with the faculty members from the East Asian Studies Department who brought this forward, they are in touch with lots of school districts in California who are teaching Mandarin Chinese. And so I think we have two courses of action in front of us. We can approve the course outline tonight as is, and then gather the information that you're looking for, or we can delay the vote with the intention of gathering that information. But I think it's easily accessible. Certainly, this is at play in many other school districts, and I think the ultimate goal, and certainly we've been clear with that from the very beginning, is that the goal would be to move toward AP Mandarin as a senior in high school. Go ahead, Ms. Cordero.
Well, I would be perfectly happy to approve it with the understanding that we'll get the information. I'm actually more concerned about sort of establishing maybe a template, or at least a standard expectation of what a course outline will include, when we, if they, when they come forward to the board.
I understand that, but I'm certainly glad to work with Su-Fen and all of the supporters that we've had meet with us to develop further these outlines. And I'm glad to look at, I've seen the book, the book's about this thick with course outlines, and they're all a little bit different.
Okay.
And I'm glad to look at perhaps developing a standardized form for submission to the board.
Right. And I appreciate that you're saying that, because I don't want this to sound like a criticism of the proposers' work. I think it's more of maybe an oversight on the district's part to not have more of a standard.
Yes.
Form or format. Thank you.
Any further?
Do I understand correctly then, I mean, this is going to start in seventh grade?
The proposal.
I see her as seven through 12 program, but I can't picture some, you know, a 10th grader stepping into, I mean, and my understanding from people who have, from English speakers who have learned Chinese, is that it is long, arduous, and requires continuity. And so I'm just assuming, but I'm looking to you for an answer. Are you really talking about a junior high school course, that then will move on up? And then, and then will?
I think if, if we can begin a seventh grade and a ninth grade course, then we'll have two cohorts moving. I think what's really essential is to have children begin to learn language as early as they possibly can. I know that that was my original concern, was starting Chinese in the ninth grade. I'd like to start Chinese in kindergarten, and, you know, or Spanish, or Arabic, or whatever it might be. That, to me, is what the research says, you know, younger children can learn language much more easily. But in talking with the ladies from the East Asian Department and with Su-Fen, they assured me that there are certainly many students who can start, even as old as I am, learning. So I don't have anything in mind, Dr. Noel, with where, I'm going to let the market drive this. This will be given to the principals at the junior high schools, and they can fly it, and given to the principals at the high schools, and they can fly it, and we'll see where we are. Now, the real demand, if demand is higher than we think, we're going to be at a loss, because we don't have teachers. We probably just have enough teachers to cover beginning pilot programs, or teacher.
Hearing you, I'm really coming around to Mrs. Cordero's point of view, and, you know, because I would assume that a course curriculum, a curriculum for 7th graders would be somewhat different than one for 9th graders, and I just don't have enough information here to.
It is, there are two separate outlines.
We do have the two separate outlines.
Yeah. Yeah, this one is for 7th grade, and then there's a separate one for 9th grade.
And they are different.
Are you planning then to do both? We're just approving an outline.
Just an outline. I'm going to take this to the principals for their help.
This isn't a license.
No.
Sounds like a license.
Would there be any, I'm sorry, would there be any sort of contact with the foreign language departments in asking them their, kind of, yeah, their opinions on this? Or, or working through, it just seems like we are burdening, I mean, we are in all kinds of ways, I think, pulling them apart, and I'm a little concerned about that.
I really don't have an answer to that, other than, these are the course outlines for Mandarin that I'm asking for approval for, and the relationships with the foreign language departments at each of the schools will be the responsibility of the department chairs and the principal. And introducing a new language and perhaps losing other languages is part of the growth process.
Can I?
I don't know how else to say it.
As a secondor, can I propose an amendment?
Of course.
I would, I would propose an amendment that says, in effect, we're approving the course outline, but asking for a plan from the high school and junior high school principals about implementation.
Will the secondor of?
Well, he was a secondor, but I'll take ownership of that, and he can second it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? So, restating the motion, it's to approve the course outlines, and also to, can you restate that, Dr. Noel?
Ask the secondary principal.
A plan for implementation.
For a plan for implementation.
Okay, thank you. And then, I understand that Ms. Cordero wishes to have some other information connected to it.
Yes, and that doesn't have to be part of the.
That's fine.
Motion, if we just understand that it'll come forward.
Great. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We have approved the course outlines for Mandarin Chinese. And thank you for coming to hear that discussion. Uh huh. Okay, now we're on to not our conference agenda, which will probably reappear at our May 1st meeting, but all of the items that were pulled from the consent calendar, and I don't know who pulled what, but as I call the number, jump in. Item D1.
Oh, okay. Oh, I simply want to call your attention to the fact that the website has no minutes more recent than February 6th. And while I recognize that we're approving here the 27th and the March 9th, that I really think we need to keep our website minutes a lot more current, because some people really do read them, and like to know what's going on more currently.
I'd like to note that on this, the minutes of February 27th, it says that D7 has been pulled, but it doesn't, it shows it approved here, but not pulled at the back, and I don't, there's some confusion there.
But sometimes, particularly if it was a facilities item, sometimes they're pulled, and then they come back at some later date. So it may, it may have been pulled by the staff person and not by?
But it's approved. It says it's pulled, but then it's listed as approved. Oh, yes, he pulled that for later, says it's, oh, I don't know. It's hard to tell.
Okay.
But maybe it needs a correction.
Is there a motion to approve item D1? Move to approve?
Second.
So, Ms. Cordero, Ms. Parker, all those in favor approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item D4. Approval of advancement by individual determination implementation agreement.
Good. We wanted to provide an explanation and give you the attachment that you have on the table in front of you for D4, since Attachment A was missing from the agenda item.
Right. And the Attachment A, this is something that we designed in my office to mirror what Attachment A would look like. It's much more material than that, but the Avid Center was not able to get us that piece. But it basically outlines what this is, and it describes more in detail what the piece that you do have, as far as the membership benefits and that kind of thing. The reason I wanted to call, to pull it was because of this additional piece, as well as on the original memo, where it says fiscal impact, and it says no fiscal impact. It should read no fiscal impact to the general fund. As you note on the bottom of this addition here, it's funding allocations from Title I and Title II. And this is the final training piece for our 4th and 5th grade teachers. They changed their structure a bit, and so we did all of our, trained all of our 6th grade teachers last year. This next year, all of our sites, including Seja Shavas, who will pay separately, are going to have their 4th and 5th grade teachers trained, so we'll have the upper elementary in full implementation. And we've also ordered agendas for every 4th through 6th grade, student agendas, the planners that where they put their assignments in, for every 4th through 6th grade student for next year, it'll just say Santa Barbara School Districts on it. And they'll be using those along with the Avid program.
Thank you. Okay, so is there a motion?
I move to approve D4.
Second.
Thank you, Malakoff, Noel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we are at item D10.
That was me. Let's see. This is the approval of the Santa Barbara High School Art and Music Block Grant Budget. And I pulled this one because I wasn't really sure why we were seeing it at the district level. We need to approve the discretionary block grants, but I wasn't sure if this was because it was some sort of carryover, but I, why, why is it here?
It really doesn't need board approval. I think it's more a matter of sharing the information. Probably should have gone into the conference agenda, just as information for you.
Okay, so we're not going to suddenly start getting these from every site?
No. But discretionary you will get.
Discretionary.
That needs approval.
Right.
So do we need to make a motion on this?
So can we eliminate this?
You can eliminate it, yes.
All right. Okay. So we're pulling item D10. Item D11, approval of memos of understanding for Academic Accelerator School Plan.
That was me, too. And the one clarification that I wanted on that is when it says included in pricing, 10 logins per site. Does that mean, and I'm sorry, I'm on the pricing for the Academic Accelerator School Plan page, there's one, I think, for elementary and one for secondary. So on both of them, part of the subscription includes 10 logins per site. And I just want to be clear, is that 10 separate people in the district or at the site have access, or do they only get to access it 10 times?
I can answer that. Those are 10 rotating licenses.
Okay.
So only 10 people can be logged in at once.
At once?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted clarification on that.
Oh, yeah, an important clarification, okay.
Move to approve?
Okay, so Cordero, Malakoff, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye was an aye.
Thank you.
I.
Five ayes.
I'm an aye.
Five ayes for D11. Item D13, approval of 0708 Career Technical Education Application.
I pulled that, Madam President, because, because I would like to simply make the record show that I recused myself on this, and not to have anything to any conflict of interest, but I don't even want the hint of a conflict of interest, because I have been an advocate of the American Journal High School.
Okay. D13.
Second.
Career Tech Ed. So, Malakoff, Cordero, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Dr. Noel is abstaining on D13. D14, approval of recommended personnel action items. Who pulled?
Are there retirements?
I pulled.
What's the deal?
Go ahead.
No, here.
Oh, okay. Well, I simply wanted to understand this ARES programmer, not to exceed 20,000. When I look at the 4687 an hour, I'm not so concerned, but when I see the 20,000, I'm concerned. Why we need that, and is there not some way to reduce that expenditure, postpone it?
Well, this is implementation of the new ARES program. I'm sorry, what's the question?
Well, I mean, do we already have a budget set up for that program, that this would be then simply spending out that money, that budget, or is this going to be something that will reappear on, like on hourly reports?
Dr. Noel? This is, go, excuse me, I'm sorry. This is basically coming out of the Microsoft fund dollars that Davis receives, the Microsoft money. And we're having, the need for Nancy O'Larry, who's worked for us for many, many years, helping us with computer programming SASE, to help us transition from ARES over to, from SASE over to ARES, and work out some of the bugs.
And this is, the source of the money again, one more time?
It's the Microsoft voucher funds.
Okay, thank you very much. That satisfies my question. Thank you very much. I move to approve that item.
Oh, wait a second. I just want to.
You can take the second, and then point.
Okay, second. And I want to point out, Mr. Jerry Foltz, the industrial tech teacher at La Calina, who's been there for 38 years, and has probably seen more students than any other teacher in the district, because he goes and gets so many students per year.
All those in favor of approving item D14, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. And you got the maker of the motion.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
Item D15, classified categorical positions, layoffs due to lack of funds.
I simply noted that, that we had, didn't have all the schools.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we got one from San Marcos, we got one from Community Day School.
Right.
You know, one from Santa Barbara Junior High. Is there a reason for, are these the only categorical positions being reduced?
Typically come out of SIP funds.
Typically come to us as school, site, site councils make their plans for the following year and decide what their layoffs need to be. So they don't all come to us at the same time. In fact, we saw the same thing from San Marcos High School last year at this time.
Well, now, does that mean we expect one from everyone?
No, not necessarily.
And in fact, this has to be approved right now, or it's pointless, right? Because the notices have to go out by April 29th, so if a school decides next week, it's too late.
Okay, so this is site council decision-making, approved by the board as is the proper way. Thank you very much.
Move to approve?
Second?
Second. I'm sorry, so that was Cordero and Ms. Parker, you got in there?
Yes.
Okay. So, all those in favor of approving item D15, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item D18, adoption of resolution 0607-27, intent to convey easement, Galita Water District at Dos Pueblos High School.
That's me. Since we're doing an easement, don't we have to vote on that separately anyways? And, but I was, I was wondering whereabouts that was, and.
You did, I anticipated that with the help of Dr. Sarvas. You do not need to vote individually, however, you do all need to sign the resolution individually. So if you do approve it, if you would let me find you before you leave for the night, I would appreciate it. Two easements are involved here. The easement that we're dedicating is right here at this entrance. This is the back, what we call Cafeteria Road, that goes back to the cafeteria. There's, on your map, on your Exhibit A, there is Padova Drive. That is right here. This is Padova Drive on your map. Right here is the area where the easement is, from the property line in here. The easement that the Water District will dedicate back to us is the line that runs from this easement, all the way down Cafeteria Road, around the corner, in back of the school, between the pool and the gym, oops, excuse me, my mouse just ran out of room, between the pool and the gym, and straight out the baseball field to Cathedral Oaks.
That's a pretty good deal.
That is an existing easement that the Water District has right now. What we've done, because this water line is running through this area, we've made the connection between this point and this point. So now, the water can all flow around the school, and this line that's on this easement here will become our line, and we will have. and this line that's on this easement here will become our line. And we will have a pressure valves and a pointed connection at both ends. So, if one of them go, if, if something happens where Galleta Water District turns off one street, we can still get water from the other.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So, Cordero, Malikoff, move to approve adoption of the resolution with intent to convey the easement, signify by saying aye.
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 And that was unanimous. Item D21, approval of consultant services agreement for real estate advisory services, Kaiser Marston Associates, Inc.
I pulled it, simply because I would like to have the opportunity to vote against it.
Any, any other questions connected to it? Okay. Move to approve item D1. Does somebody, will somebody make a motion to approve it? I'm sorry.
Move to approve.
I could do it.
Second.
Thank you. So, Cordero, Malikoff, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Okay. So, we are 4-1 on item D21. That was the end of our consent agenda, and we will be seeing these other items at a future point in time. I believe we've covered coming events, but one is a meeting next Tuesday night.
That's right, that's six o'clock.
Mm-hmm. And board correspondence?
Wait, I'm sorry, could I have, I had a question, I mean, a comment on our board meetings?
Mm-hmm.
I was going to suggest that since we are, we've added a meeting May 1st, and we are, we still have our May 8th meeting scheduled, if we could perhaps try to eliminate the May 29th meeting, which is a 5th Tuesday, and also is in that same weekend of Memorial Day.
That's a pretty good suggestion.
Okay, shall we?
Very good idea.
I'm certainly up to-
Every once in a while, I come up with a good one.
Shall we take a vote? Because that is a regular meeting on our calendar, being a 5th Tuesday of the month. Go ahead, make a motion, Ms. Cordero.
Okay, I, I move to cancel our May 29th meeting, since we are having an extra meeting on May 1st.
Second.
Okay, so that was Cordero, with a second by Ms. Parker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So, it passes 5-0, and that was done under board comments, which I'm not absolutely certain was the appropriate place to be doing that.
I'll tell you what, we'll bring it back to you on consent, so that, so that we can run it through the due process.
Great, sounds good.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So, future agenda items? Oh, we certainly have lots of those. I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.